We're the 22nd and I'd like to call this work session to order. Up first, we have weekly updates from the mayor's office. So Ms. Solano, take it away.
Good evening, Madam Chair, City Council, Mayor Gradisar. I'm sorry I'm not there with you this evening and thank you for allowing me to join you by Zoom. I have a few city updates this evening. First, I'll start with a COVID update. The one week cumulative positive case count number is 132 from this afternoon's four o'clock report, which was down from 258 last week. The one week positivity rate is 4.6 this afternoon, which is down from 6.8 last Monday. Pueblo County has now 14 days of stabilized hospitalization patients in Pueblo. I do not have any hospitalization patient count from either Parkview or St. Mary Corwin this evening. And our health director, Randy Ebbets, and our health department physician, Dr. Urbina, will be attending next week's meeting via Zoom and they will provide the COVID update for the coming, for this past month and the coming months. I'd like to move on to the second update, which is just to make sure that council is aware that the mayor issued a declaration of temporary housing and shelter emergency this morning for the city. It began this evening at 5:00 PM and it will run through Saturday morning of February the 26th at 7:00 AM. The authority for the mayor to declare the temporary housing emergency was passed and provided by city council this last fall. It provides allowing churches, synagogues, mosques, temples, and other religious institutions the availability of opening their buildings as temporary shelters for the city's homeless through this cold, bitter, snowy, anticipated weather week. And I want to close this evening with an ARPA update. At the direction of city council this evening, we will continue to hear the round four proposals and requests for funding. Our ARPA coordinator, Julia Cordova, has updated all of the presenters this evening that council may not give direction this evening to the mayor and staff with respect to approving any of the presentations for funding until we've had an opportunity for a work session on wastewater proposals and then the city council's priority direction for the ARPA 2022 funds, which are anticipated to be received in May. All of them have been informed. And that does conclude the city's updates this evening unless you have any questions of me or any further direction of what you'd like for me to bring to next week's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Solano and any council comments or questions?
Yes, please. Thank you. Laura, I don't know if you're prepared to talk about this tonight. If not, you can move it for work session next week. But I'd like all of council to get a briefing on this 47 million that was thrown out there for reserves with the sewer and wastewater. I specifically ask about that because I thought it was kind of interesting that the mayor said that sewer water had 47 million. So I inquired about that and you explained how it hadn't, a large portion of that hadn't been transferred over. So I would like some kind of clarification on that.
It will be, thank you, Councilor Winter. We can certainly make it part of the ARPA presentation for the mayor's discussion or also part of wastewater as it is their cash balance at the end of 2020 and it rolls over into their fund balance that they utilize for operation and projects for the year. So I will have the detail and be able to pull up where that information shows in the CAFER, the annual comprehensive financial report. And I will bring that next Monday if that's all right.
Okay, so in other words, that money is not there for infrastructure needs, correct?
A lot of it is for already approved projects that city council has approved for wastewater. So we will go through the detail of how much of that 47 million has already been approved for different projects that wastewater has brought to city council.
Okay, so that's capital money. And then also, Councilor Martinez, I was wondering if we could get a consensus on possibly getting the Pope Building listed. So it's listed all the time so that we don't have these little things that come up with, I know a guy that knows a guy that wants to buy it, so let's put out an RFP. We had it listed for a little over a year with Barclay Clark. And you know, of course, he knew how to qualify folks. And so we didn't, we didn't run into, to any of this. Can we get a consensus on that, Councilor Martinez?
Yes, so for, this is to list the Pope Building for sale and I'm just gonna go, are there, oh, Councilor Flores has.
I just wanted to say that this isn't something that this council should be dealing with. This is really an administrative decision that should be made by the mayor. I think if we have, if we luck out sometime in the future and it's, and it's sold, then you know, we'd have to enter into a, you know, contract. But I think we're outside our boundaries here.
I don't, oh, sorry, 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 sorry. I don't think so, Dennis. When we listed this back in 2016, it was an ordinance by the council.
I don't recollect that we initiated it, but. Dan, can we, can you clarify this? I mean, this is really in my mind, an administrative issue the mayor should be taking care of. And we can't be involved in all of the details in running the city. I mean, we're, you know, we.
Can I, can I interrupt? Council has control of all city property, real estate, and also the budget.
At the appropriate time, if we sell it, you're correct. You know, we would have to vote an okay of sale.
You know, I can't recall if it was the city manager or the mayor, but they listed the property with a broker out of Colorado Springs, I believe. The listing was about six months and may have been extended for an additional six months. And that listing agreement was, was approved by, by city council.
The listing?
He got no offers, by the way. There, there just were, just no offers on the building.
Councilor Tensio, I think, wanted to say something.
Also, we should probably have a conversation at least before we have a consensus. You know, just let's have a consensus. Okay, you know, shouldn't we have a conversation? Presentation or something before we make a decision on what we're gonna do? Not just a decision. Also, I agree with Dennis, it's, it's an administrative function, not a, we are the, what's it called? We're the legislative arm of the government. We're not the administrators.
Councilor Martinez Ortega. Councilor Maestri.
Well, we recently talked about the Pope Building and that it's been, you know, a huge expense for us every year of 3,000, 300,000 plus. And so, and you know, people are bringing it up as far as inquiring about it. So, you know, maybe it's something that we should have a discussion on to consider.
Councilor Martinez Ortega.
Yes, what if we put it on the schedule for work session down the line? So we could actually delegate some time to talk about this.
Mayor Gradisar.
We can actually put it on for a work session. We've actually got two parties that are interested in it at this time in talking about it. Now, whether those will come to fruition or not, I don't know. But recall, a year or so ago, we had somebody that wanted to pay a million dollars for it. Council said, no, let's do RFPs. We do RFPs. By the time that process was done, the guy that wanted to pay a million bucks backed out. We got zero interest in it. So we continue to work. I sort of hate to list it with anybody now. We have two prospects that, you know, we're looking at. But we can certainly update you as we go along.
Could we hear about those prospects in an upcoming work session?
Yeah, those are probably the kind of things we want to discuss in the executive session since it's confidential negotiations and we wouldn't want the public to know what, or the other party to know what the other party was willing to do. So, you know, it's in the form of negotiation. Sure, we can certainly talk to you about that. We can schedule that after the next council meeting, I think. We'll get it on the schedule for an executive session.
Okay. Councilor, Councilor Martinez, just, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, just for clarification, when I'm asking for consensus in a work session, that's exactly what we're talking about, is scheduling it for a discussion. If nobody's interested in that discussion, then we don't schedule it. So when we, when I said, when I asked for a consensus, it's not, yes, we're gonna do it right now. It's, yes, we're going to talk about it, a possible ordinance. Also, I would like to ask if this property is not RFPed or it's not on the market for sale, it needs to be offered to everyone. We just can't be making offers as phone calls come in. The, the deal that fell apart that Nick just mentioned was a contract that Beth Gladney brought to us and he backed out because of the maintenance expenses. So if it's listed with a realtor, we can avoid those kinds of things because a realtor can give them all the information upfront. So we're not, we're not messing around all the time.
So it sounds like we'll move this subject for further council discussion after the next regular meeting. The next presentation that we have is the Pronghorn Solar Project by Mr. Ordigon.
Good evening. Madam Chair, council members, mayor, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. My name is Arthur Ordigon and I'm a partner at Wilkinson-Barker Nowhere. I'm here representing Leeward Renewable Energy and their Pronghorn Solar Project. We're here to ask for your approval of the draft resolution and support of the Pronghorn Solar Project. And we ask for your support for two main reasons. First, solar is a growing industry, not just here in Pueblo, not just in the state of Colorado, but nationally. From President Biden, Governor Polis, to our esteemed mayor, it is understood that a transition in our energy portfolio to include more renewable resources is not a nice to have, but a need to have. And as we know, Pueblo has an abundance of sun. And so we want to see the city and county of Pueblo lean into the solar industry as it, as it grows. The second reason why we would ask for your approval of this draft resolution and support of the Pronghorn Project is to show regionalism, to show that the county and the city are swimming in the same direction when we're talking about solar industry. Because right now, as some of you may know, the state regulator, the PUC, the way that they do procurement sets up projects, county by county projects. So the Pueblo County projects are put up against, say, the Werfino, Rao, El Paso County. So we want to show that the city and county of Pueblo are all in support of these kind of solar projects. Because as some of you may know, solar projects, they invest hundreds of millions of dollars. They create hundreds of jobs, particularly in construction. And they also increase property taxes. That's real money for libraries, schools, roads, water. And we want Pueblo, the city and county of Pueblo, to support these projects because they bring real tangible benefits, not just to the city and the residents, but also the world at large. So want to stop there and open it up to any questions that you may have about solar or the Pronghorn Project. But once again, we ask for your approval of the draft resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Ordigon. Are there any questions from council? Councilor Flores?
The, who would you be selling the power to, I guess is the main question.
Sure. Right now, the project doesn't have what's called a PPE, which is the kind of procurement. So what happens is that it goes up to an RFP. So it gets sold to an Excel at Black Hills. But at this moment in time, the project does not have a utility attached to it.
You're gonna be producing about 150 megawatts, as I understand, which is a substantial amount.
It is.
And so I'm assuming that you're gonna create a business entity, which basically, where's it going to be domiciled? Where are you domiciled now?
Yeah, so the owner of the, of the project, the business, is Leeward Renewable. They are headquartered in, out of Dallas, Texas. And then the parent company is O'Mearns, which is a Canadian pension out of Canada. Reason I bring that up is these pension, as you may know, are very interested in long-term and not short-term profits. So when they come into a community, they want to be here long-term. They care about investing in the community because once again, they're, they're not in it for a few years, quick profit. They're in it for decades and, you know, I don't want to say a small profit, but you know, certainly care about the community and long-term prospects of that project.
And where are you locating the property? Is it out in the county?
Yeah, it's actually, it's so, good point, Councilman Flores. It's right outside the city boundary, so it's in the county. And that's why we're, we bring up that kind of regionalism concept. While some of, some of those benefits may not be directly to the city, some of them will, right? Bringing money into D60, D70, that supports the whole community. But it, the whole project is literally in, right on the city border, right next to Evraz, Steel Mill, whatever we are calling it these days.
So you're asking for a resolution, basically, because you need it for financing, you need it for authorization? What specifically, if you could zero in, why you need a resolution from us?
We would like a resolution from this body because of the Board of County Commissioners. Think they are not necessarily seeing the true forest from the trees. And so once again, we want to show that this city and county, the city supports solar to really kind of, so they can understand the benefits as well.
Thank you for the clarification.
Of course, thank you, Councilman.
Other question, Councilor Tensio.
Yeah, I'm in full support of your efforts because as you may know, I sponsored the resolution to do, to bring Pueblo 100% renewable by 2035. Just an idea, we could subscribe to a solar unit like this for all of the city's electrical needs, which would bring us that much closer. I believe our solar, our electrical needs for all of our city buildings, all of our silly city properties is about eight megawatts? Am I wrong? Somebody, does anybody know? Anyway, my point is that we could, this is, be an easy road to subscribe and get every city facility 100% renewable through a project like this one. And we're the solar capital of this state. Let's bring in as many solar units as we possibly can.
Appreciate your support, Councilman Tensio.
Councilor Maestri.
So you're just asking for a resolution, you're not asking to help fund your project at all?
Nope, just support.
And then, so you've taken it in front of the county commissioners and they have not agreed to work with you?
That's not, no.
Well, what is it that?
So the state procurement rules, there's a 1041 process that the county must go through. So we're going through that at the moment. So we have a public hearing in front of the Board of County Commissioners, March 10th. And we wanted to have this as part of the evidentiary support of the project because they, they have voiced general concerns at the solar industry. I'm not sure if you've been following, but they try to do a pretty restrictive regulation that in the industry and landowners had to push back pretty heavily on. We, I think we got to a workable place, but we're certainly concerned being the first project out of that, that fight that there. We just want the support of the city.
Okay, so just as a recommendation, if we don't know what's going on with the county, I think we should at least give the county some, let us update us as to what their feelings are. Because maybe there's something that we don't understand about it. And if they're making you go through the hoops for a reason, right?
Well, the hoops are the state procurement process. They're not extra hoops.
They didn't just give you approval like you're asking for us to do. Yeah, I mean, you're asking for us to get in on, on what you're trying to do here. Because if the county would have just agreed, like we're agreeing, you wouldn't be going through the procurement process?
No, I wouldn't say it like that. So we're going, they have supported solar. They've supported solar projects in the past. We are just trying to get the community's support of solar. But they have to go through a particular process to give land use through that 1041 permitting. And that's what we're going.
Councilor Tensio.
Yeah, that 1041 process is quite extensive in that there are the boundaries of the solar unit. Can't be this close to housing developments. They can't be too close to whatever. There have, there has to be easements between the solar garden and, and what it got. So they're going through that. If you remember correctly, the county commissioners ran into some problems with a solar unit southwest of town and the people along Wild Horse Road. Burt Mill Road went up in arms and, and they could, they literally could not build there because they didn't, the homeowners didn't want to. Well, this isn't the case with Pronghorn. Pronghorn is in the southeast part of the county. And they're not gonna have that problem. So it's just a matter of going through the 1041 process and that is really extensive.
Well, you were just saying that the county couldn't see the forest through the trees and you were gonna, but you thought we could. So to me, that sounded like there was probably something there that the county wasn't agreeing with. You said that, forest through the trees. The county couldn't see that.
I appreciate the point, Councilwoman. I think the standard is different for what the county is determining than what I'm asking the city to. All I'm asking is for the city to say they support solar and this project. What the county has to go through to Councilman Tensio's point is a lot more rigorous, a lot more determining of how it's cited, you know, glare, setbacks, a whole variety of different things. And that's what they, and so we just once again, want to show that the city is in support of solar in general to say, hey, the community is behind the solar industry.
Councilman Flores.
Yeah, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I think, number one, the county would not object to us supporting solar, number one. And number two, you're saying it's more likely that the state would, would, would give you a favorable passage of the 1041 if they knew the entire community, the county and the city, we were all working in the right direction. So I, I, I think it makes sense for us to do it.
Sure, not to split hairs, but yes, that's correct.
Let me just make one more point. The energy that's gonna come off that solar, you're selling it on the open market probably. And that's not a problem. I mean, electricity is bought and sold on that market all the time and, and there's more demand than there is supply actually in that market.
That's correct, but it's not on an open market. The way that the PUC and the state regulatory system has put it forward is that the utilities have to put out RFPs to be included in their rate cases and their ERPs. And that starts to get a little more technical. But the Black Hills, the Excels of the world have to put out RFPs to electric producers to be included in their portfolio. So it, it doesn't go to an open market per se, but it goes to the market that our state has created for these things.
Mayor Gradisar.
With the council's permission, we'll put this resolution on your agenda for February the 28th. And rather than putting on the consent agenda, we'll put it on the regular agenda so that you have an opportunity to discuss the resolution in any detail you want before you vote, if that's acceptable. Okay, put it on the regular agenda.
I'm, I'm seeing a lot of nodding of the heads, Councilor Winter. Do you have anything before we move on?
Um, not really. It doesn't matter to me if it's on consent or, or the regular agenda. It doesn't matter.
So I think let's move forward with.
Regular agenda.
Yeah, regular agenda. Okay, thank you so much for that presentation. We're gonna move on to the next.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. We're gonna move on to our next set of presentations that are all revolving around ARPA. All of the, all of the rest of the presentations, I just want to call out that they're all 10 minute for present, for presentation, five minute for questions. And so in an effort for fairness and standardization, we've just provided a visual cue for a timer up there at the front for the 10 minutes. And the first presentation will be from Boys and Girls Club around transportation. So we can have Ms. Hiron, Ms. Medina, and Ms. Martinez come to the floor. And Ms. Solano is out, so we can use her chair to accommodate the three of you.
Whenever you're ready.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Chairperson and members of the council. My name is Becky Medina and I'm with Boys and Girls Clubs in Pueblo County. Really honored to be here to talk to you about our proposal for youth transportation. You may remember, last week, Boys and Girls Club is an organization that serves youth in here in Pueblo County, seven different clubhouses for youth ages six to 18. Our mission is to enable all young people, especially those that need us most, to reach their full potential as productive, caring, and responsible citizens. By those that need us most, the youth that we are serving, nearly 90% are living at or below poverty. And we recognize that we're providing both access and opportunities. And transportation is the window to both. Our fleet, as Cheryl Martinez, our program director, will talk to you, is aging. And we need more vans to be able to transport more young people. Transport young people from schools to the clubs, supporting our families so they're not having to take off of work or have issues with their employers to leave to make sure that their children are in safe supervised space like Boys and Girls Club. And we also have limits due to new insurance that we have. And many of our fleet, they're so old, they're the 15 passenger cargo vans. And those vans have some safety concerns in transporting youth on highways. And so part of the compromise was a compliance plan with our insurance to phase those vans out and purchase minibuses. We can still use the vans while we have them, but we do have to limit from 15 passengers to 10. And we also have made provisions that we will not transport those vans on highways. And we limit the speed to 45 miles per hour. So I'm gonna let Cheryl talk a little more about our fleet and the challenges that we've had. And these vans that we will purchase minibuses with funding for our Sprague and our Eastside Clubhouse.
Thank you, Ms. Medina. Thank you, Madam Chair, City Council, Mayor Gradisar. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to share. You know, as we serve in our mission to serve kids six through 18, is we currently have a fleet of 10. And within that 10, we have five Econoline, Ford Econoline vehicles, which are vans. And then we have five buses. Within that, our oldest vehicle is 28 years old. Our youngest vehicle is five years old. Within our fleet of 10, two of them are within, that are younger than 10 years of age. And, you know, with our clubhouses before, kind of like Becky mentioned with our expansion prior to August, we had four clubs. And with that, our Eastside Clubhouse and our Sprague Clubhouse both utilize three vehicles each. And that's providing transportation. And then with our extension, what we added, Central, Menecua, and CCA, we needed to share those out so those clubhouses would have transportation means. And so by sharing that out, that actually took away a vehicle from each club. And so with that, you know, we use our vehicles a lot and a lot of it is with the day-to-day operations. During COVID, we actually used our vehicles a lot because what we did was we provided club-on-the-go packets. And what we did is we went door-to-door and we provided families with educational packets along with food and snacks, because as we were talking. And we provided families with educational packets along with food and snacks, because as we were talking with our families, we noticed it really wasn't like large food items that they needed, but now that kids were at home and they were eating all day long, that they needed help with snacks, and so what we did was since families were kind of, you know, there was still that fear factor of going out, we just did door-to-door and just dropping them on the doorstep so they can get what they need. And we do use our transportation a lot throughout the day, and when I say throughout, it's for mostly pickup. We pick up depending, you know, from our Eastside Clubhouse and our Sprague Clubhouse. You know, uh, our Eastside Clubhouse picks up right now at four different clubhouse, uh, you know, schoolhouse locations, our Sprague at three. We could do more if we did have that opportunity, we're constantly getting schools calling, asking if we can add service and what they mean by services is be able to do that transportation pickup. Uh, we do do transportation home at night for those families that need it. Our Eastside Clubhouse, when, um, we have our two Westside Clubs right now, but they're strictly elementary school sites, and so what we did to help serve the middle school and high school population is we provide transportation to our Westside Club over to our Eastside. So that alone is one and a half van loads, uh, home every night, and that's just at our Eastside Clubhouse, but then we also do teen night transportation home, so when we have teen nights and our teens are out, we make sure that they're getting home. You know, directly door-to-door service, so we're dropping them off at home for our teen nights. And in the summertime, we get really busy because we're, you know, and once I said is before, this is before COVID, we try to get the kids out into the community. We go swimming, roller skating, bowling, we get our teens out on college, uh, and career field trips, we take them around the city to do different things. And also, we do, uh, leadership conferences for Boys and Girls Clubs of America, all the way up the front range. We will go as far as the Fort Collins for some of these activities. And then also, when we've had the opportunity where businesses in the community have reached out to us, specifically Heroes and Helpers, where we've had, you know, our kids have the opportunities to shop with, uh, local police enforcement and you know, our kiddos didn't have means of transportation, so that was every, every fleet that we had vehicle in our fleet was used that day, plus borrowing two additional to make sure that the kids were picked up from home, got to shop, then taking them all home with all their shopping goods and making sure they got home to their parents. But we also had the opportunity to pick up parents during that time when we had some businesses in the, in the area that were, you know, they wanted to help our families out, but a lot of our families don't have means of transportation, so since we have the buses, we were able to pick them up, take them to the location so they could get the services and then taking them back home. And so the whole family was able to take part. So we really count on our vehicles a lot in an essence, and, you know, we, the kids love the opportunity, uh, to be in the buses, especially when they're new, and so I think, um, having that opportunity to have two more would just enhance our Eastside and our Southside experience.
I think we went over our time, so I'm wondering if I could, there may be the parts that I was gonna ask uh, or speak about maybe part of your, I can go. Okay, I'll, I'll do it really fast.
Two minutes and twenty seconds.
Okay, so that was our ten minutes, and then you still get five minutes for yours, okay, I was like, oh my god, we're going over our time, so. Um, you know, I just want to say, appreciate, um, everything that Becky and Cheryl already shared. Uh, one of the things that you all know, as we're hearing on the news, um, about the impacts the pandemic and COVID has had on our school-aged children. Um, the research, research is also already starting to indicate that this may be a generation, if not two generations of what's happening, and so there's a real urgency in trying to, um, mitigate the issues that our, our kids are experiencing, not only academic, but certainly socially. And that's really, when I think about vans, how we use them, and it's that opportunity to take them all the places that Cheryl um, already mentioned, and so that's, um, I think critical for you to know that piece. And then we're certainly pretty well-known, um, over our fifty years, the way that we have survived over fifty years is grants, that is our biggest revenue source, and, but for vehicles, it's few and far between that we have opportunities to, um, apply for grants. Um, in twenty twenty, we received a thirty-five thousand dollar grant from the Rawlings Foundation, which allowed us to, um, get a, um, minibus, a used minibus. As we said, we don't have anything younger than twenty seventeen, and it took almost nine months to be able to get it, to try to get those there. Really, when people have them and it's a lot of childcare places, um, ski resorts that use them and they just keep using them because they don't have a lot of miles, but they get a lot of usage, so it's very difficult to even find the used ones. And we have a fleet where we're taking kids around, they're twenty-eight, I think my daughter was a club kid and some of them are still there when she was a club. So they're old, um, and this, we just thought this was a really, an opportunity that, um, our kids were really impacted by COVID and thought this was a good, um, use of that. One of the questions came up about, we already have a maintenance plan. Pablo Day Nursery provides, um, some of that, we get sponsorships for our vehicles, um, from businesses, the county LEAP program is that, and then our board has set twenty-five percent of any surplus that we get every year to a vans, so that's we are always trying to do that. I'm over the time.
Yeah, thank you, Boys and Girls Club. What questions do we have from council about transportation? Uh, Councilor Martinez Ortega.
Yes, hi, thank you all for, for being here tonight. Um, how many young people are being transported from the Eastside and Sprague on a daily basis? Uh, or weekly?
And I, and I'm talking as far as numbers is, I mean, uh, with their fourteen seaters, we do, and I'm trying to do it in my head just because we do two van loads to Bradford Elementary, we do a van load to, um, Fountain Elementary. Uh, when the days are nice, we can try to walk the kids from Parkview, which is about twenty-eight kids from Parkview Elementary that we walk through. If not, when the, when the days are cold, we try to get one of those vans that are back sooner to go and shuttle the kids from Parkview. And then we do about, uh, eight from Keaton right now. And right now, because of everybody's release times, it's been kind of working because we get right back to the club just enough to drop off those kids and head out to the next school to get dropped off, and at Sprague, we do a van load from Bessemer Elementary, right now, Corwin Elementary, uh, middle school is actually trying to get two busloads. But, uh, we do twelve right now from, um, Corwin, and, uh, right now, we're trying to get back at PSAS because we need another vehicle to do PSAS and part, and possibly Highland Park.
We're transporting between sixty and seventy-five, uh, a day, picking up at school and, and taking them home from those two sites. That's just part of, that's just that one piece of it, the school to the club and then taking them home and then activities throughout.
Uh, let's see, what, uh, have, have your numbers decreased, uh, during the COVID era? And do you, um, do you anticipate them to increase again?
Yeah, thank you. So they, uh, when we closed, they, they did decrease, we had decreased capacity. Um, but the need for transportation continued and the ability to transport young people. Uh, what we really are seeing now is an increase in the need for the services and an increase in the use. Um, our Eastside Clubhouse, you know, we talked about last week, they're increasing, they're seeing as many as, as a hundred kids a day, which is fantastic.
Um, other questions or comments from Council, uh, Councilor Grant? Uh, how much are you asking for?
Um, a hundred and sixty thousand, a, um, minibus, regular minibus in twenty twenty-one, when we sent this in, was, um, about eighty thousand dollars with the specs that we were able to to get, and that was twenty twenty-one, I didn't check to see if they've increased.
How many passengers fit in a minibus? Fifteen? Thank you.
Uh, Councilor Tensio.
Yeah, I, I don't want to be a Grinch, but American Rescue Plan, I'm, and I've been asking this of everybody who comes forward to ask for help, how did the pandemic, how is this money going to help you recover from what you lost in during the pandemic? I don't see how buying new vans going forward to make your your, uh, program better, to, I think you said enhance it, have to do with what you lost during the pandemic. Uh, I mean, I, I, I'm willing to give you a hundred, if I had the money myself, I'd give you a hundred and six, sixty to to do it, but that's not me, uh, this is, uh, do you understand what I'm saying? A lot of places closed, a lot of places got, uh, rescue, uh, pandemic money, and they did well with the pandemic money, and then they got another tranche of money later on, and then, uh, we got this American Rescue Plan money, going to, to fund things that are gonna make you better in the future has nothing to do with what you lost during the pandemic, and this is for everybody, not just you.
Absolutely.
How, how does it?
I understand. I understand your question. Um, what we think is what kids lost. And so, um, that was my, you know, kind of my remarks about the, the generation, um, from academics to their social emotional wellness and to be able to get them out to, um, re-engage, um, and acquire that. So it's not necessarily, I mean, that, our business is kids, so our loss is what's happened to kids. And, um, kids impact that is gonna be with us, I think, for some time, so that's what it's about. We really see that the, to be able to serve kids, right now, the other part, um, that we, I think Cheryl might have touched on a little bit, is that we opened three more clubhouses. And so with our fleet of ten, we were operating for our four clubhouses with that fleet of ten. And then when we opened three more, we had a pull from those, um, other clubhouses, and so that's why they're doing double, we're not being very efficient.
When did you open the other three?
August, we opened one in Menacua Elementary, um, one in Caesar Chavez Academy and Central High School, the Ray Aguilera, um, teen clubhouse at Central, so we opened those three in August um, of, of this last year, so it, you know, it really did, um, I mean, that didn't have anything to do with the pandemic except that the need just grew stronger for kids to be able to have out-of-school time help because they're so behind on their academics. And I know you're well aware of, uh, Councilman Tensio, that the pandemic hit, um, communities of color and um, people who are under-resourced, that's who we serve, that's who we target, and they, these are gonna be able to provide first, access to the club and then opportunities in the community, I have a little, some photos since we're not as cute as the last presentation that we did when we had our young person here, just all the different things that we're able to get them, um, those opportunities as a parent of, um, a graduate of, um, Boys and Girls Club, that's, she was able to do things that I could never uh, myself be able to provide her, and I think that's what our parents tell us, they couldn't get a, to the activities and the opportunities that the club provides. So that's what the, um, it's being able to get back to those kind of activities that the pandemic made it even worse for the kids that we already serve.
Um, uh, Councilor Flores.
It seems like I'm putting words in people's mouths these, tonight, for some reason. I, I think two really good reasons why you need these buses is safety of, for your kids. I mean, you've got some really old vehicles that need to be replaced, and, and the other is, uh, reliability. Uh, when you have vehicles this old, uh, you know, you, you probably have these down every, every at least two a month, I mean, I, because they're pretty old vehicles. And so I think you also, because of the pandemic, lost the opportunity of maybe other grants, because it, it seemed like everything just shut down. And even psychologically, you didn't have as many kids as you did before, so you may have missed out on opportunities to get more money uh, through other grants, but I, I, I would focus in on, on the safety and the reliability of these vehicles, and I think they're, they're not, it, it's not like you're asking for extra seats or anything. You just want to be able to, to continue the programs.
Sure.
That wasn't a question there.
Yeah, no, but I appreciate, I think the safety thing, but I, I do want to say, um, because with that old fleet that we have, we are obviously very good about taking care of our vans, and, and so we do do that, and there are some that are down, I mean, there was some bolts, I think, and I just got an email of some bolts, where those came from, like a construction site, so they are down, um, and windshields and all that, but they are safer, we wouldn't be driving them, I do want to say that, but it is, they aren't, it, what it is, is we're spending more money on repairing them all the time, uh, than we would be if we could actually invest in, um, either a new van or newer vans.
Councilor Maestri.
Well, I'm just, uh, what, um, Councilor Tensio was saying, you know, we just attended a conference, him and I, this week and started to learn a lot about ARPA funds and where they need to go to and where they stressed for us to really spend them, because this is a one-time opportunity for the city. Um, and how to place those ARPA funds and how responsibly to place them, because, you know, they belong to the taxpayers. And the taxpayers have a lot of needs with their infrastructure, with the city and so forth. Um, so, you know, that's, that's just some heavy considerations, so I could understand why he'd bring that up to make sure that we um, we're asking to be fiscal stewards when it comes to spending this money, not to rush it, we were told not to rush it. And to really take back and see what the needs are, because it is, it is ARPA funds, but it's taxpayer funds. And the taxpayers own the city, and there's a lot of needs of the city too. So, thank you.
Sure, absolutely, I would say that it has been vetted even, um, by the city attorney that it meets all the, um, requirements through the different stages to get to where we are today, and I guess I see it as, um, as an elected official that you would, it, it's about forecasting, like here's an investment in these young people now so that in the future, we're not having to put in money to be able to, um, keep kids off of, um, public, um, services, and so that's, um, I think we have a really good track record of what, um, graduates of young people from our program go on to be able to be, um, good, um, citizens and give back, and so that's, I would say, um, to be able to think about it as an investment in young people.
Yeah, these, um, also mentioned through the bed, uh, Build Back Better, that there's plenty of funds for such situations like five oh one C threes and so forth, there'll be a lot of grants there and to be really responsible with your ARPA funds.
Councilor Wanner, do you have anything?
Uh, I do, just, uh, just to, um, kind of piggyback, uh, with Councilor Tensio and Councilor Maestri. Um, it was in the Denver Post today that, um, Denver is really freaking out about COVID emergency funds in a tune of thirty-two million dollars that are not, that they're not gonna get reimbursed on, um, because it didn't actually meet what it was supposed to be meeting, so I, we need to be really careful.
Um, well, as someone who works with young people all the time, I think that the pandemic really impacted their mental health. Um, I hear from my youth advisors all the time about how their mental health, because a lack of connectivity during the pandemic really hit them. And I think that it's a great opportunity that Boys and Girls Club is connecting these young people to not only each other, but to different community things in an effort to improve their mental health, which is a byproduct of the pandemic, is a great thing. So thank you for your time, Boys and Girls Club, and the next presenter we're gonna, we're going to, oh, for the record, really fast, um, because it's not just Ms. Hiron, would you mind, um, identifying yourself for the record?
Becky Medina.
Thank you, Boys and Girls Club. Um, the next presenter that we have is around the Financial Navigator Program. And I believe we have, um, Ms. Solano as well as Ashley. Ashley, would you mind, um, saying who you are for the record before we get started?
Hi, I'm Ashley Wynans, I'm the CEO at Neighbor Works Southern Colorado.
Whenever you're ready.
Madam Chair, City Council and Mayor Gradisar, um, I am going to start off, um, the presentation this evening and requesting um, your consideration for a nominal ARPA funding, and I'm gonna turn it over to, um, the city's partner in the Financial Navigation Grant, um, Ashley Wynans of Neighbor Works, who was the provider of the grant and the which, to which we it has expired and we're requesting a bridge until the Financial Empowerment Center can be stood up and that will, this, these resources will get us through, um, helping our residents that indeed were, um, most hardest hit, uh, by, uh, the, um, the COVID pandemic. Um, this ARPA request asks for your consideration of approving funding for six thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars. Um, it will continue the funding and access to the city of the incredible, uh, national resources, state and municipal resources in, uh, counseling electronically, uh, to the individuals that call in for resource assistance. Um, it will provide a financial navigator for twenty weeks. Um it will provide a financial navigator for twenty weeks, twenty hours per week at a at a dollar rate of twenty-five dollars and fifty-four cents. That does include benefits uh for eighteen-week period that will get us through um April of twenty twenty-two. Uh the city did contribute uh the last of the ARPA funds, excuse me, the last of the grant funds uh for this Financial Navigation Grant. The total that we need was nine thousand one hundred and ninety-four. And the city's administrative share of that grant of two thousand four hundred has been committed. And we are still short then six thousand seven hundred and ninety-four dollars. The Financial Navigation Grant was awarded to the city in late twenty twenty and um operated mostly through the uh the important tax season and hardest-hit time of individuals um uh coming out of losing their jobs from the pandemic, needing rental assistance, needing utility assistance with hunger relief. And um it actually um what is supported and backed by the Bloomberg Philanthropies, who awarded the grant to the city, the City Foundation, JP Morgan Chase and Company, and the Wells Fargo Foundation. The CFE Fund, or City for Financial Fund, um partnered with thirty-one other local governments across the country that provided technical assistance and funding to launch the Public Navigation Program. Uh the trained financial navigators, they went through forty hours of training. They provided structured guidance over the phone to help people with strategize about supports for disruption of their income and their other financial concerns. As more and more of them fell into um their bills that were turned over to collection, these were resources that would connect to um uh credit card companies, to student loans that were forgiven during the period, but assisted with answering questions. And it will provided a triage about their financial issues um that were identified immediately. This also will go hand in hand with um the other ARPA approval for the program of the eviction diversion program that City Council approved last fall. And it actually opens up next Monday, um May, March the seventh. And it will be open in the Pueblo County Court Mondays and Thursdays to assist the individuals who are on the brink of um eviction. And as you recall, that ARPA program actually will provide and and um target both um the rentor and the landlord in um working through and resolving some um past rental um unpaid rent and to come to so resolution. Um I'm going to turn it over to Ashley and she has all the details with respect to the local program as it's operated and what this bridge will provide until we can open the Financial Empowerment Center under a an alternative grant application. Thank you. And Ashley, it's all yours.
Thanks, Laura. We actually started this program in fall of twenty twenty in reaction to the COVID nineteen pandemic. Um we put together this entire program with the help of Cities for Financial Empowerment and the support that was put through for that. So the program itself operates on the cloud software program Salesforce. Um and the CFNE or Cities for Financial Empowerment manages this entire platform um for this program and keeps up to date any national um assistance or national services that residents can access. And then what our financial navigators do and what they work to do at the beginning and continue to work through is updating any state or local resources that are available. So when the city, say, passes um a a component, being able to get an access rental and mortgage assistance, we update that in the program. And so that when somebody calls in, we're able to get people to what they're looking for. So this is something that a lot of nonprofits have done for a long time. But having sort of that formalized component allows us to measurably um figure out who needs what and where, what could possibly be the gaps and what people are coming to us from. So it gives a much better picture of what do the citizens of Pueblo need. Um in the year or so that we ran the program, we assisted a little over three hundred and fifty Pueblo citizens. Um we assisted more people during sort of the tax season and before some of the uh assistance programs for rental and mortgage um came out. And now that those are sort of uh expiring, we anticipate another probably fifty to seventy-five people per month. I think it's important to note that Neighbor Works America actually supported part of this program um at ten thousand dollars from October through December. And so we're coming to the city to finish that gap, um and bridge it through April fifteenth. And then we'll begin to the process of actually transitioning the program to the Financial Empowerment Center. It's also important to note that Neighbor Works Southern Colorado has partnered with United Way. Um we've been speaking very specifically about how we can pair the program with the VIDA program so people can navigate not only how to do their taxes, which is totally different this year with all the different assistance programs that have been out there, but also how to get people to the right resources, um who are utilizing those services. I think that is sort of all that I have informationally, and I would welcome any questions that are out there.
Thank you for that information. Um what questions are there from counsel? Uh Counselor Graham.
Yes, Ashley, is this house that Neighbor Works right now or where is 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 are these monies going to to pay somebody? Or what is what's going on there?
Yes, the program is currently housed at Neighbor Works Southern Colorado. Our HUD certified counselors are currently um also certified as financial navigators. And so the funds are used to directly support payroll for these associates.
President Graham, uh the grant as it was available was allowed only to um applicants that were municipalities. And it was a requirement of the grant application that we identify a nonprofit provider um where the city worked in tandem with uh the nonprofit provider, which is Neighbor Works. But the financial navigators were trained um by the by the the National Office and were housed at Neighbor Works.
Okay, I'm seeing no other questions. Um so thank you for that presentation, um Ashley and Ms. Solano. We're going to move on to our next ARPA presentation from Mr. Trujillo about Fire Fit Kids.
Thank you, Madam Chair, council members, Mr. Mayor. My name is Tim Trujillo and I'm here to present to you my Fire Fit Kids program and our presentation for our uh ARPA request for a new bounce house for our program to serve our youth. The COVID nineteen pandemic forced the city's children indoors and took away many of the opportunities children had to be active with schools being closed and limited over the last eighteen months. Children also missed out on the important physical education classes that served many as their own means of physical activity throughout our communities. Also, our children's mental health uh started to decline as we were not able to get out into the outdoors uh to share that space and to do the things that we were kind of used to doing. Uh Pueblo's children have always experienced a higher rate of obesity among their peers across the state and the nation. The pandemic only further exacerbated that need for alternative means to children to participate in equitable physical activity and opportunities. Fire Fit Kids began in September of twenty sixteen here in Pueblo, Colorado. Uh and it's the vision to bring local kids into our neighborhood fire stations to have a firefighter-related obstacle course, to do a fire station tour and to meet the people that live and work in their communities. So as adult mentors to the children in our community, we are taking that opportunity to use our fire stations to be places of refuge, to be safe havens, and to provide the kids in those communities uh an opportunity to come and see what they do. And so that uh access to these events isn't limited. We're going to be in your neighborhood at one point or the other. All of our fire stations are in the neighborhoods. On the other side of that, we also do community events like the Chili Festival, the Colorado State Fair. We're going to do the by classic this year. Um we participate in everything from uh community events with Pueblo Diversified Industries um to the Pueblo County Library District, both school districts we participate uh with our program. And uh what we would like to do is purchase a bounce house for the kids to give them another opportunity to do something fun. And so this bounce house is a firefighter-related obstacle course. Um it gives us the opportunity to serve more kids in a smaller area. Uh currently, we have equipment that we get out of the fire stations that we've purchased um to run the obstacle course. And we continue to do that on the second Tuesday of every month at a different fire station in the city. But when we get out to places like the Chili Festival or how we're going to do the bike classic this year, to be able to serve more kids, I think, is really, really important. And to let them know that we're there for them, to be able to have that mentor in the community. I grew up on the east side of Pueblo and I, all I ever wanted to be was a fireman. I didn't know how to do that. The reason we brought Fire Fit Kids uh into this town is because I used to ride my bike to the fire station on the east side, flatten my tire, ring the doorbell and ask to use the pump, just so I could see the fire trucks. It wasn't until I was twenty-four years old and I found an adult mentor to help me get through that process that I was actually able to get on this job. I started applying when I was nineteen. I didn't get hired until I was thirty-two years old. So getting into the schools quicker, getting access to these kids quicker, letting them know that they are the future of our community. They're the going to be the future leaders of this community, whether they work for the fire department, whether they sit where you sit or they work for the police department. We want to let them know that they are the future of this community and they mean something to us. So we're here today to request seventeen thousand dollars for the purchase of our bounce house. Uh the bounce house total cost uh or retail cost is twelve thousand one hundred and thirty-one dollars. This allows us uh the opportunity to buy the blowers, uh the storage and the maintenance of it. Um we we know that the city has needs and we understand those needs. But the mental health needs of our kids and the physical activity needs of our kids um are paramount to us. And we're going to continue to do what we do and we're so excited to be able to see those kids come back now. With the weather getting warmer, March is going to be our first Fit Kids event uh in our stations in twenty twenty-two. And we're hoping to see a bunch of those kids back. And we already have twenty events scheduled for July of this year. So um the partnerships that we've made, like I say, with everybody from Rocky Mountain SCR and Epic Books, uh the library, the the Parks and Recreation Department, the districts. Um the value of the program, I think, and the and how it is different in the mentoring side of it um is really important to us. And I hope that it's really important to the rest of this community. And we're excited to be here and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Trujillo. What questions are there from counsel? Uh President Graham?
How many kiddos are you seeing on on these Tuesday nights?
So on the Tuesday nights, uh we purposely or I purposely try to keep those small because I want to have that interaction between our firefighters and those kids in that fire station to be really personal and for them to have that personal interaction. When we go to someplace like the Chilean for Hola Festival, we might see a thousand kids in a day. If I go to an elementary school, it's going to be five hundred kids in a day, um the same with our middle schools. So we see about ten to twelve thousand kids a year. Um we have the ability to have access to those kids because, like I said, we're bringing the program to them. We're bringing the program to the places that they are. And if they don't have access to transportation, eventually, we're going to be back in your community, right? We're going to be back in your neighborhood and we're going to give you that opportunity to come and see the people that serve and live in your community.
Other questions or comments from counsel? Uh Counselor Maestri.
So how many on Tuesday night?
We get about ten to thirty. I'm sorry, I didn't answer that.
Yeah, you didn't.
Yeah, it's about ten to thirty kids on a Tuesday night. And so we do that uh twelve times a year. And uh then we have our other community events, like you say, and then we do stuff with the library district and all those other ones during the summertime. And uh those numbers really get high.
Thank you.
Uh President Graham.
Do you do you get funding for these events that you guys put on from anywhere else or is it just you guys?
Currently, we get a thousand dollar donation from the International Association of Firefighters Local Three. We get that once a year. Um last year, we did get some in lieu of donations because one of our supporters' husbands passed away. And uh we got about fifteen hundred dollars from that. But otherwise, uh it's kind of been self-funded. And uh some of the stuff that we have around the fire station, we use fire hose and the implements that we use in firefighting to take it out to the kids. Obviously, we have some things that are a little bit safer. But um we have needs that go outside of our income right now.
Yeah, I think I've I've seen this. You were guys on the news not too long ago with this. Yeah, it looked looked cool. Looked like you had a lot of people there and lots of kids.
Yeah, we try to be as in as many places as we can be.
Counselor Tensio.
Let me apologize first, Tim, because I've known you for a long time and I know the the heart you have for the kids. And I know uh the heart you have for your job and every and the people of Pueblo. American Rescue Plan, let me ask again, what are we rescuing? Uh like uh Ms. Maestri said, we were at a conferences last whatever Thursday, Friday. Uh and uh official from Washington was there. And they specifically said, try not to fund things that are new. Because when this bounce house has goes past its useful life, how are you going to replace it?
That's the down the road.
We are, yeah. And how are we going to have the buses? Well, how are we going to replace the buses? We we funding new things is not a good thing because uh we're not going to have that money after that. And so if these organizations run out of bus or bounce house in a couple of years, they're going to come back and say, oh, we need a bus and oh, we need a bounce house. Uh can't help you.
And I think for us, we've been doing it since twenty sixteen. And I think the creativity of the program, uh the creativity of the people that we have helping with the program allow us to continue to provide new things to the kids. Um this is just one more tool in our toolbox. And I do understand that uh there are going to be some limitations to these.
I don't want to put a burden on organizations that uh when you run out of bus, you're going to be out of a bus because we can't give you another bus. This is one-time money that's going to go out and of fifty thousand miles down the road, that bus ain't going to be worth darn hardly anything of. And the key word is disproportionately affected communities. Is that the word, Dan? I'm sorry, I might have missed it.
You got it exactly right.
Disproportionately affected communities. And and so far, the communities that have come forward, I agree that we're disproportionately affected. But I I think a a word of caution. When the bounce house wears out and you're used to having it, what are you going to do then?
We're going to continue to serve the kids the best we can. And hopefully, we'll have more opportunities in the future. We don't want to see something like COVID come around again. But there will be more opportunities in the future for funding, the ability to to go out and create those kind of streams to bring that those things in. And and that's our hope, right? We hope every day that we can make this community better for our youth. And that's the reason I'm sitting here today.
Um Counselor Maestri.
Um yes, just in the future, I mean, they say all these funds are coming out for all all of the programs. And so just keep be aware that if you if we don't aren't able to or decide not to fund some of you all um that there are through the Build Back Better is going to come out and it's going to hit um children, nonprofits, mental health, all different sorts. So there's always additional funds to.
It's exciting. I mean, these are exciting times for us coming out of the back end of this to even have these opportunities to be able to sit in front of you today and say that we did this for the kids, I think is it's all exciting for us.
Yeah, so there there's a lot more coming.
Counselor Flores.
Yeah, I I I need to clarify something in my mind now. And I wanted to ask our city attorney uh this question. When at the point that we're receiving these uh uh the uh we're reviewing this stuff, it's already been vetted by a committee and it's been vetted by our city attorney. So the sequence here is strange that we're trying to vet this now a third time. And I I can imagine that there would be a lot of organizations that would be on a list uh that some are better than others, you know, as we fund them. Uh I'd like, you know, I like your program a lot because you have nothing. I mean, other than the manpower, you do this on a voluntary basis. Uh so you're doing it really for the right reason. But I want to be clear is that it you've been vetted twice already by a committee and by our city attorney. And uh and I I guess we have the responsibility of kind of prioritizing all of these things. And there's some better than others. But I don't, I don't, I think that you you do fit uh the guidelines in my own mind because we're dealing with uh um, you know, a lot of kids that are are suffering right now. I mean, they've got some mental issues and uh the socialization piece. And so the more that we can do for our kids, uh I can't I can't imagine a better place to invest your money. Uh but I just wanted to clarify that. It's almost as though we're the vetting city council and whatever we say is going to happen, which is true in one way. But I am gratified that we've had a committee vet all of this and that our city attorney is saying that your your program does does qualify. I just wanted to be sure that I say that.
Counselor Tensio.
I I I don't want anybody to think that I I have all the confidence in the world in committees and the vetting process. And I have all the confidence in the world in in our city attorney. Uh I I'm, I'll probably be the first one to vote yes. and I have all the confidence in the world in, in our city attorney. Uh, I, I'm, I'll probably be the first one to vote yes. But I just want people to know that these are the, the realities and, and, uh, the guidance that I have gotten is, is exactly what I'm saying.
Tim, I know that for your program, you guys often go out into schools or to community centers, which were closed during the pandemic. Where were you operating in the pandemic? Tell me a little bit about that.
So the library this summer, it was a little tough this summer, but, uh, the library still had their books in the park series. Um, we were still getting out with, uh, the Ferrola Festival. We were there. Um, we were trying to be as responsible as we could and get into those places. Uh, this last year was really difficult for us, just because it was the, it was the timing and then it was the rules that we had to follow. And the health department was really clear in the fact that the kids could use the equipment and share the equipment as long as they wore a mask and they social distance. And so, um, this last year, we had a, a Christmas event. We flew Santa Claus in in a helicopter for the kids, and that was the first time that some of those kids had ever been to anything like that because of the pandemic. And so, uh, to open them up to those new things, uh, and to be in those places where we were invited, I think was really important this last year, especially because they were coming out in droves. We had kids, uh, more kids than we had at most events, because people were ready to be out and to start socializing again. And so, um, like I say, we did a lot of stuff with the library, um, over the summer.
Uh, Counselor Maestri?
Um, I'm, and I'm sorry, uh, I just want to, it's not anything against what your program is or anything. I just want to clarify that, um, since we're talking about it here, is that we were told, see, we're one of the very few cities in America that has a seven pillars. Uh, council members are taking responsibility for their ARPA funds across America, because that's what we're elected to do. That's our fiduciary duty, is to spend the taxpayers' money, make sure that it's spent properly. And so they told us directly from Washington, "You are the fiscal stewards." Pete, this is a one-time opportunity. And then I went back and I checked against the things they were telling us. And they said to concentrate on spending it on our infrastructure, because it is one-time. There are funds out there for these other programs. So watch out for those funds, too.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all.
Um, President Graham?
I, I'm all about, you know, infrastructure to an extent, but I think that we also need to be investing back into our community. That's what the money was for. That's what we need to do with it. I mean, like, you've been vetted two times, like Dennis said. Um, I think it's great. We got a lot of money, and I think that we can use a lot of it for the kids, because they were, you know, seriously put back over the last two years. And I'd also like to make it a point that the previous councils already have spent four million dollars, and now it's just being questioned on what we can and can't spend the money for. I mean, it seems kind of crazy to me that we're even having this conversation tonight, when so many other nonprofits and other people have already got this money. I, I don't, I don't see how we can just stop on, on round four, so that's all. Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Um, we're going to move on to our next ARPA presentation from Friendly Harbor, um, about staffing. So can we have Ms. Hill? Whenever you're ready, Ms. Hill.
Constituent in the room, my daughter, Ayana, wanted you to know she likes the bounce house thing. That's another vote then, Tam. I, I told her, I, she said, "Can I raise my hand?" And I said, "No, babe, I'll tell them." Um, I'm Michelle Hill. I'm the Executive Director of Friendly Harbor. Um, thanks for, for doing this, for doing the work. It's a lot. And thank you to the mayor's office. The process was phenomenal. Um, some sort of, you know, side benefits of networking and learning about the community and what's going on and some other sort of ways to connect, and, um, that's been fantastic. So, so thanks for that. And we should be proud of ourselves as a community for that. I think it was pretty novel, so. Um, I have a couple of questions I'd like to start with. I do have a PowerPoint. Do I, do I get a clicker, or how does it work? It should be up there. Yeah. Got it. Okay. Um, so some questions and just head nods are fine. I'd like to benchmark some things to see what you know to kind of make the best use of our time. Do y'all know what peer support is? Yes. Yep. Okay. Um, that's fantastic. I'm glad. And do you know how it works in our community? Are you familiar with any peer support going on in our community already? Yes, um, okay, good. Fantastic. And are you aware that Colorado ranks dead last in adult access to mental health in the nation? Number fifty-one. That's where we rank right now. Is that something you're familiar with? So the governor has created a Behavioral Health Administration to address the issue. We're highly connected to that, and peer support is a major component of what's going to happen. Um, Pueblo, obviously, I think it's been mentioned before, tends to trend above the state in issues like this. So please keep that in mind as we talk about this. It's, it's pretty serious stuff. All right, so we know what peer support is. I, I, I put a slide up there. Um, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration defines peer support. That's the feds, that's the, you know, um, Health and Human Services Division, um, that really is responsible for mental wellness, um, and substance use issues. These are people who have navigated mental health and substance, and/or substance use issues successfully. They go out into the community and they connect with other people that are struggling on this level and help them navigate the situation, both with resources, um, and emotionally. I put our mission and our vision up there. You can read them. Um, Friendly Harbor improves the quality of life, develops relationships, and provides a unique model of support through peer specialists for those living with mental health and/or substance use issues. All right, so how do we do it? How does Friendly Harbor do it specifically in Pueblo? Um, we connect, we have lots of entry points, lots of really great ones. We're super fortunate that we've connected to the community in some serious ways. We work with district courts. So this is Behavioral Health Court. This is Veterans Treatment Court. This is Safe Baby Court. So these are some really good access points to connect with people that are our targets. Um, and we, we do a great job in those courts and are highly supported there. Probation, we have a contract with probation. Probation officers are starting to understand that if they'll connect people to a peer, those people will be highly successful, at least far more successful than if you don't. And that saves us all a bunch of money. These are people that avoid recidivism by connecting with a peer. Um, DHS, uh, we have a contract with DHS. One of our biggest programs is called Mentor to Success, um, M2S. So we get people referred to us through DHS. We connect with them, families, parents, and so on, get them connected with a peer and help them navigate whatever they've got going on. Uh, Park View, one of our, boy, we, we were so excited about the Park View program pre-COVID. This is, um, a connection with the neonatal unit. So when a drug-exposed baby is born, we race like our hair is on fire to connect with those folks, to help them navigate what's about to happen, whether it's the court system or DHS or what have you. COVID did put the brakes on that, because the face-to-face contact was cut off. We had to get super creative and figure out how to connect those people virtually or at arms length or what have you. We done okay. We're really fortunate. We had a grant in place from the Colorado Health Foundation that funded this. And you're talking about recovery. This is where it happened. We're super lucky that they were able to flex with us and, and support us in however we could do that. But we, we didn't do what we thought we would set out to do. So that's the recovery piece we're talking about, and I'll talk a little bit more about recovery in a minute. Um, the Rescue Mission, we have a program called DBT, Dialectical Behavioral Therapy, with the Rescue Mission. That's a group. Um, we do our best to connect with them. That's our target audience, too. And other community partners, we've, we've gotten as creative as, you know, connecting with the health department, the El Pueblo Museum, to talk about mental health and just get ourselves out there as significantly as we possibly could to make sure people know how to find us. Okay, and our house, um, we are at the old Lincoln Home Orphanage. We took that over quite a few years ago. That's our drop-in center. COVID, COVID obviously put the brakes on that, too. You just, you, you can't have people, you know, you couldn't, at least last year. It's opening back up and we're doing a better job. We host groups. Um, and that, that's why our people meet with a lot of folks. We also go everywhere from coffee shops to court to people's houses and so on. All right, so sustainability, I want, I want to make sure you all understand how this works. We're asking for funding for staffing. Once we get, get the staffing in the house and we get them ramped up, they become self-sufficient, because we bill Medicaid. We have a DHS contract. We have a probation contract. And we also have individual and corporate supporters and donors. The point is to get them hired and to get them trained is a very long process. It's about a year to become a peer support specialist. It's, it's certified through the state. Once they get trained, it's a little bit longer than a year to get them really sort of financially viable in the billing processes. So we got to get them hired, though. So we need a, a good year, a good solid year, to get them hired, find them, and get them trained. I put a couple of pictures up there. That's the house. I'm sure you're all familiar with where it is. And that's some of our staff. Um, our staff is fantastic. Right there in the corner is Chantel. She runs, um, Circle of Parents and our Mentor to Success program. She's the, was the parent of a drug-exposed baby. Her peer was our now Program Director. She, um, was right there. You see her being honored by the, um, State Child Law Center. They, they had her come to their annual gala. Um, she kills it. And this is what we're talking about. These are the people, these are the people we need to go out and find and have help, the people that are lagging behind. All right, so we know what peer support is. We know how Friendly Harbor does it. Why are we a fit for ARPA? Averages said in May that mental health issues and substance use issues were up in the twenty-eight, kind of maybe thirty percentile. That was in May. It's only gotten worse. We're upwards of thirty-five percent now. Um, and as we've said before, Pueblo trends above the average for the state, right? So we know what COVID did. We know that COVID drove the need up. There, there's, there's no two ways about it. Um, so what are we asking for? We're asking for seventy-five thousand dollars. This will get us four FTEs on the year. Some of this is going to have to be broken up into full-time and part-time. Lots of our people do very well on a part-time basis, because they have other commitments. They have people that they are supporting in their personal lives. So this may be a couple of part-time people and a couple of full-time people. We also want to ramp some of our part-time people up to full-time. We really think that this will double our impact. So last year for twenty twenty-one, in spite of COVID, we had five hundred, what we call, members. So these are unduplicated people that we supported on a long-term basis. This doesn't count the onesie-twosie people that we connect with at court or through probation or through DHS, which I don't want to discount those connections, because they are highly effective, and sometimes those people circle back to us. That's tough to track in terms of numbers, um, but it's out there. As far as recovery goes, we lost two staff members, uh, specifically because of COVID. They just lost their momentum. It's hard when you're doing nothing and not connecting to people, not to go seek other things where you can have meaning and purpose. One of them is a fantastic success story. Um, he came through the state hospital system, um, and he's now in Denver running a reentry program, workforce reentry program. Um, two of them honestly just said, "You know, I need a break. I can't, you can't do it forever." Um, also, the, as far as our, um, budget goes, we do need a little bit of recovery there. We started billing Medicaid about a year ago. We anticipated ramping up much faster than we did, but because of COVID, we just couldn't get the momentum. We were only under budget for twenty twenty-one by about twenty thousand dollars, but that's due, uh, in part to county cares money. We got thirty-five thousand dollars in Co- in COVID money, county cares money, but that's all we got. Um, Mr. Tensio mentioned several tranches of money people are getting. That's it. That's all we've gotten so far. So we, we'd like a little bit of help getting in that recovery mode as well. Um, disproportionately affected communities? You can look at the data all you want. Pueblo is really hurting as far as mental health and substance use. I don't think that's a surprise to anyone. So I'm under my time. You have extra time for questions.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hill. Sure. What questions are there from Council? Uh, Counselor Martinez-Rutega?
Yeah, I thank you for, um, thank you for your presentation. Um, do you have in-kind donations, like folks who, who work and donate their time?
Yeah, we have to be careful, because obviously Fair Labor Standards say you can't get paid and volunteer. So you have to be strictly a volunteer. I have two board members that are peer support specialists on a volunteer basis. Um, and they are certified, um, but, but their workload is obviously much less than the people that are, that are getting paid. The other sort of really good in-kind support we get, um, is all of, we haven't bought a roll of toilet paper or a paper towel in the house for probably a year and a half. Lots and lots of that kind of support. Um, we also do things, like there's a small food pantry that we, we, we do just to help support our people and kind of promote, uh, traffic in the house, that kind of thing. All that stuff is in-kind. Our budget for, um, expenses in terms of like program supplies and things like that, it's just non-existent. Really, our, our staff, though, is our program. It's a little bit different than a normal nonprofit, um, where you're, you know, distributing clothing or food or something like that, or housing people, where your program is what you're doing. Our program is our people. So it's, it's a slightly, when you're asking for funding for staffing, it's just a slightly different tack when you think about it that way.
Yeah, I agree. Um, and the in-kind, uh, donation of those positions or of that work is a testament to the hard work that you all are doing, uh, um, because people wouldn't be donating their time
Yeah.
if you weren't doing anything.
Yep.
And the reason why they have to donate their time is a testament also why you need this money as well.
Yep, and my staff would donate their time if I would let them, but that's not legal, so.
Oh, good. Thanks.
Uh, Counselor Tensio?
I'm going to take a different tack this time. Seventy-five thousand will only pay for one full-time and two part-time. I don't think you're asking for enough.
I don't think I am either.
I, I, I think we should increase it, to tell you the truth.
Thank you very much for that. You're right. You're absolutely right.
Full-time people, seventy-five thousand isn't going to buy you two, my, two full-time people.
We don't pair people very much money. So you and I could do the math together, and I think you might be shocked, but I would be thrilled.
I would be, yeah. Don't pay them so little. You gotta pay them more.
It's another thing that we're thinking about, too. I'm honestly asking for money for things, like in the future, there's a plan for benefits funding and things like that, but I have a whole different sort of idea for that, that someday you'll hear about. Nonprofits need help with benefits, small nonprofits in particular.
If I were king, I'd increase that to a hundred thousand, to tell you the truth.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Counselor Maestri?
Precise presentation. It was, that was very nice.
Thank you.
We didn't have to ask you how much you needed.
That's my job.
You, you had it in your presentation.
That's my job. Any other questions or comments from Council? I'm curious about how long your peer, your peers stay. Like, what's the average tenure?
Yeah, some, some never go away, right, Joe? Some never go away. Um, uh, we've had, uh, people with one or two-year tracks. Honestly, that's a, that's a sort of in-the-weeds conversation. A lot of it depends on how they've come to us. Folks that come to us through the state hospital, I don't know if you're familiar with that system, conditional release and so on. Some of, some of those guys are long-term. Um, some of them, um, we, we have a couple that, I mean, we've actually advertised on Indeed and gotten one of our best peer support specialists. It was just sort of an anomaly. If I can keep her for another year, I'll, I'll feel lucky. She's a rock star.
Well, thank you, Ms. Hill.
Yep.
Let me ask a question. Dan, I don't really think they asked for enough. Is there any way we can increase that? Because, uh, I, I know what you're doing and I know the kind of work you're doing. Well, seventy-five thousand is not going to buy you what you want.
We, you know, we've been through this process, as you know. Uh, the first step is to go through the seven pillars to get their rec, get community input. That's happened. Then they, they, they show it to me, and I make a determination whether it qualifies or not. This program clearly qualifies, a- as does the, uh, the first two that you heard tonight. The, there'll be a presentation tonight on, on history, the history presentation. I apologize. I haven't finished my research on that, so I, I can't, I, I can't say that it qualifies.
The reason I ask is because.
Then the next step, if, if you give the go-ahead, I prepare my simple, uh, thirty-seven-page sub, sub-recipient contract, and it, it has all the rules that they have to comply with. What you give them is up to city council. Uh, you, you can increase or decrease. That, that's up to you.
At which point?
Yeah, so we're, we're now in the direction phase. What, you know, what does council want to tell me to prepare sub-recipient agreements for? And I'm, I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, because, uh, I, I love the Boys and Girls Club, but they know how to ask. They don't mess around when they ask. They, they know exactly what they're doing. Uh, I, I think you sold yourself short. I think if you could come back and justify another twenty-five thousand, I'll, uh, I don't know if I would recommend or, 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 um, suggest that we increase it, but if you could do that, because, uh, I, I know, you're, you're really selling yourself short. You really are.
I appreciate the confidence in that. I, I really do. So, yeah, whatever the opportunity is, obviously, yes, if I've left money on the table, then I'm not doing my job, right?
No, I, just, some organizations know how to ask, and, you know. Uh, and Boys and Girls Clubs is one of them.
Mayor?
Yeah, we're, uh, with the exception of the lost revenue money, we've overcommitted, basically. The, uh, the money we have available for ARPA with these recommendations. We're one hundred and twelve thousand dollars over, I think. Now, we think we'll be able to adjust that, because people won't spend all the money that we've allocated to them. But I guess what I would suggest is for a program like this, if there's money at the end, we can come back to them and say, "Hey."
And then we do have another round next year. We have another round of ARPA money next year.
Well, we hope we will, in, uh, in May. We'll know that, uh, whether that eighteen million hits the bank. And then we can have the pleasant task of allocating that. Yeah, that's, okay, great, great fun.
Let's look at it, because.
Appreciate it, and I'll watch for it.
I know the work you do.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So perhaps we'll see you again then, um, in the next coming months. Thanks, Ms. Hill.
Sure.
Sure. Um, the next presentation that we have is from Mr. Abram. Sorry. Oh, I did, excellent. Whenever you're ready.
All right. Mayor, council? I'm ready. So I am the president of the Pueblo Juneteenth here in Pueblo, Colorado. A little-known fact, Pueblo Juneteenth organization is the oldest, Pueblo organization, the Pueblo organization is the oldest Juneteenth organization in the state of Colorado. And they were the first. So that's just a little bit, a little bit of history. I've seen people, some of y'all out there for the celebration and things like that. Um, I did ask for fifteen. They said to focus on ten. I'm not sure where that came from, but that's what I was told. Our money goes to, some goes to the celebration, some goes to running the event and the rest of it goes to the, uh, the scholarship recipient. And that's what they said I needed, mainly focus on that. But we do need to run the organization and run the event, which costs money. We were hit, twenty nineteen was pretty much, I think, for all nonprofits, especially smaller ones, because we are very small, we're very small. We're probably the smallest organization probably here. Um, and older people, just, just a lot of things came up in twenty nineteen because of COVID. Um, and that severely impacted us. It was, it was bad. We didn't have the celebration. Um, I still was able to give out a scholarship. I had to reduce the amount, but I still was able to give out three scholarships that year. Uh, once, yeah, I know, that's pretty, I was impressed with that too. Because I was like, I don't know how we're going to do certain things, but we still were able to, um, do that. We were also able to sponsor Queen, uh, which is also a part of the Juneteenth organization. And I opened up, uh, some other, um, I guess categories in the Juneteenth, uh, Queen pageant tree type thing. I don't get into pageant trees, I got somebody that does that for me. But, uh, so we opened up some other things for younger African-American females to participate and get, get going. Because like I said, twenty nineteen was, was, was pretty bad. Um, shrunkled into twenty twenty. Um, and then twenty-one, we finally were actually able to have an event, which our firemen, which they always come out, our firemen are in our police, always come out to the events. They always help us. Uh, I'm invited, for, for some strange reason, they think that, uh, Juneteenth is just for African-Americans. No, it's for everybody. It's a celebration of a people. And I've said that numerous times on the news, that everybody could come to the Juneteenth event because it ain't, it's about everybody. It's about a celebration of a freedom of a peoples, not a one individual group. So that's why I invite everybody. All community booths are free, so we don't get anything from community booths. Uh, every community booth that comes out is absolutely free. That's from schools to fire department. We don't, I don't ask for money from them because that's not what it's about. It's about the community, our community, Pueblo community. So all the community booths are free. The only thing we actually do if, actually get paid for, and it's a minimal fee, uh, is if they're selling items like food. So if they're selling, I, I have to ask them to actually pay. And it's seventy-five bucks, seventy-five to a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five bucks for their, um, for their booth, if they have one that they're selling stuff with. Um, like I said, we were actually able to have an event, uh, last year. I, um, we, we, I got amazing people that work with us, um, will work with me. And we pulled it off. We had a vaccination, a vaccination station. We had a van at the event and we were vaccinating people, absolutely free. Uh, and that was great. And that's that a Colorado Denver organization came down, got with them. So we still had that. Um, had a couple of food trucks out there. Like I said, I was, I was able to actually boost the scholarship a little bit more because we did receive a grant from the mayor. And we also received, uh, a grant from the county, I believe, last year. Um, so that kind of pushed us through a little bit. But now all that money's allocated and pretty much going again. So back to square one, um, have to get some more money to get this thing going again. And hopefully, well, I think, I think it boosts the scholarship to a higher amount. Because, uh, like I said, when you, I ain't going to say cut corners, but when you want to give a lot out, you gotta, you gotta allocate the money in a certain type of way. So I wanted to give more scholarships and that really didn't pan out because it ended up being like a five hundred dollar scholarship, which I break it down for the semest, for per semester. So they get five hundred, you know, or two, two, two hundred and fifty dollars. The, the summer, uh, they'll, I guess, I guess that'll be your first, I guess the winter semester is your first semester. They get that and then I actually require them because people were just giving money away and I just don't believe in that, that, that students need to be accountable. So they have to send me a certified, certified GPA. Uh, same thing with them when they're going to college. When they're going, I need to see that you're going. I'm not giving, I'm just not going to give you money and just say, oh, uh, go to Trinidad. No, I need to see you're going and then just see the classes. So that's how that is broken down to, that's just so they can be accountable. So, so they can have some, some type of accountability and the money doesn't just get done however it gets done. So there is some, there is accountability, there is some, some form of tracking. And, um, like I said, if they don't meet certain requirements, they, they might meet it for the first, first, you know, the first semester. Second semester comes back, I require them to send that in by February first, showing their grades from the first semester. If they drop below a certain grade point average, which is two point five, I think that's reasonable. And, um, or if they don't have the right amount of, um, of classes, then they, they have to, um, either they're ducked it, but, um, did that timer go off on me or? Okay, sorry. Uh, so they're either, the money's taken in some form or they don't get it all off. They just don't meet the criteria and it's just put back in the bank in the same account. So stuff is split. There, there is a separation from Juneteenth event, the, the girls' pageant and the scholarship, so.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Abram. What questions are there from council? Uh, Councilor Martinez Ortega?
Uh, yeah, thank you. Um, I've been to the Juneteenth, Juneteenth, probably like the last five at least, um, events, uh, minus the year that it didn't happen. Um, and I always think it's a great event. Um, I always see plenty of people there and somebody who knows, um, has firsthand experience with the Cinco de Mayo Day of Education in the Parks in Ray Aguilera Park. Um, I can under, I can appreciate what it puts for, what it, what it takes to put some, put an event like that to help enrich and continue our culture here in Pueblo. Um, so thank you for that, Mr. Abram, Abram. How many people do you think were, um, at some of your past, past events before, um, pre-COVID era? And how many do you think that you can, um, that you can get this year and then moving forward? Do you think you can get your numbers back?
So actually, the numbers were actually pretty good last year considering they put on stipulations, then had to go and do the guidelines and then they said, no! And then had to go back and tell my people, no, we were doing it this way. But I think we probably had upwards of, I want to say a hundred and fifty people, but people were also scared to come outside and breathe and do everything else. So I, I was actually shocked that we had, and we probably have more like two hundred because we did have the vaccination station there. So we probably had more like around two hundred. But I think once we get kind of stable, you know, and I, and, and we have, and if there's, if there's something comes up and we have to, we have to do what we have to do, you know? And I, and that's, that's how I took it. But I was actually shocked that we had as many people as we did last year. But I, I'm thinking if I can get this money and, and then push some more stuff onto the event and boost the scholarship, I think that would bring more people. Because I know one year, um, I only had one scholarship recipient, which shocked me, one. And it was announced, went to the schools, everything's put out, and I had one. So I think with this money, I think, I think the bigger the number, that might attract, attract more people to apply.
Yes, absolutely. And how much are, or how many scholarships are you gonna, are you planning on giving out? If, let's say this fifteen thousand is awarded, um, and how much would those be?
So if there's fifteen, uh, well, yeah, it, it was, I think it went down to ten. So I, I got you. So it would be, yeah, he stopped me, he's like, no, no. No, not ten. So with the ten, with the ten, uh, six thousand would go and it'd be two thousand apiece for each scholarship. So that'd be a thousand-person semester.
Great, thank you. That sounds.
Other questions from council? Okay, thank you so much for your time, Mr. Abram. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, then plugging along here on the ARPA presentations, we have the Child Advocacy Center. So can we have Ms. Chavez and Ms. Everhart? Whenever you're ready. Drink water, I've been dying of thirst since five thirty. This is a good hydration break for everyone, if you're going to drink water.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you Public Child Advocacy Center's ARPA funds request of thirty-seven hundred dollars to enhance our existing child abuse prevention outreach. I am Jennifer Chavez, Executive Director of the Pueblo Child Advocacy Center. And with me tonight is Jordan Everhart, our child forensic interviewer and outreach coordinator. The child advocacy movement began in the late eighties with the realization that children needed to be treated differently when abuse was suspected or disclosed. The Pueblo Child Advocacy Center was incorporated in December of nineteen eighty-six, making us the first in Colorado and the sixth in the world. We have been providing a child-friendly and safe environment for abused children for over thirty-five years alongside our community members and our MDT members. Over that time, we have become recognized experts at reacting to abuse and other maltreatments for children in Southern Colorado. Today, we want to become experts in preventing that abuse. The COVID pandemic has turned many Puebloans upside down, especially the most vulnerable. Many of our children suffered at home when their caregivers were under extreme stress and they were outside the watchful eyes and ears at school and other places where people were trained to identify abuse. Now more than ever, prevention needs our attention. During the pandemic, we served over five hundred children. Just over three hundred children were under the age of twelve years old and as young as three years old. These children are in your districts, in our schools and in our community. And these are only the children that we knew about. We know that no one intentionally ignores abuse. However, risk factors, warning signs and disclosures are often missed or dismissed due to lack of knowledge. It's also due to a lack of confidence and the fear of being wrong. Therefore, people won't report what they are seeing or they're hearing. We want to change that. Our focus outcomes with our child abuse prevention outreach is to increase the number of reports to law enforcement and Department of Human Services by people other than mandatory reporters. We will give our community, we'll give parents and caregivers the tools to recognize behaviors of abuse, but also how to report that abuse and how to be confident in reporting the abuse. We'll also give parents and caregivers the tools to improve their ability to cope with the stress. We will accomplish this with our four pillars of outreach, which Jordan will now speak about.
Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Jordan Everhart and I am the child forensic interviewer and outreach coordinator at the Child Advocacy Center. And while we offer an array of services that are flexible based on the needs of our community partners who we are serving, we do have a structured series of pillars that we like to focus on in order to best educate our community members. The first of which being the pillar of education. How critical can you imagine it being to understand the concepts and the challenges faced by so many children in our own communities? The types of abuse faced, including physical abuse, sexual abuse, emotional abuse and neglect? The co-occurring rates of such abuses? Along with the local trends that we are seeing in our community? The trauma associated with such abuse? And the consequences and the, of the myths that are so prevalent in our community? For example, the myth of stranger danger, of individuals who are unknown to these children or family that are the highest risk of perpetrating, which is simply not the case. This educational pillar really sets a foundation for every other pillar that really stacks on top of it. We like to think of this as a foundational series of pillars. So keep that in mind as I'm explaining the subsequent pillars. So education being the first, we follow that up with the secondary pillar of identification. This includes building upon the knowledge of what we're actually seeing in terms of abuse out there, these trends, all of this, and really identifying what the risk factors are. What are things that may be out of our community members' control that make them higher risk for potentially becoming victims and co-victims of such atrocities? That includes caregiver risk factors, risk factors of the child, of the family environment, of the environment of the home, and finally of that of the society. A great example of this is the perpetration rate against children who have disabilities. One in three children with disabilities are sexually abused in their lifetime. And that is a national statistic. And that is what we know about. With that in mind, we also allow time and education for the warning signs associated with such abuses. This includes the behaviors of children. We will expand on the trauma associated with abuse and how to identify some of those non-verbal cues. Additionally, the grooming behaviors of adults. As I stated earlier, the myth that strangers are the predators is simply not the case. In fact, it is members of the family, people known to the family and child and people that is, are trusted and have access to these children who are the perpetrators at hand. So educating on them, educating our community members, excuse me, on how to identify some of the concerning behaviors that otherwise may not be caught. Upon the identification of such risk factors and warning signs, we begin the process of response to abuse. This includes identifying abstract disclosure because as we know, not all children are able to articulate themselves, their challenges and the struggles that they face in a very concise way that makes perfect sense to an adult. There's simply no way. So we want to focus on educating individuals on listening for cues that a child may give that something is going on and they may want to talk to about it. We also want to focus on the gathering of information, making sure that when our community members are asking questions, that they are actually asking good questions and not harmful ones. This includes asking and talking to children in a supportive, motivational and validating manner. Can you imagine a child not wanting to continue the talk when they feel like the person that they have entrusted the secret to is blaming them for what happened to them? Because fundamentally, it's not what we say, it's how we say it. So focusing on a component of that within this response to abuse is a critical side to our community education. Upon that, we build upon protecting children, what that actually looks like, fundamental skills to make sure that our children are as protected as possible. And then finally, preventative measures. That includes the preventative measures of the agencies that we are providing. And then finally, preventative measures. That includes the preventative measures of the agencies that we are providing our outreach to. To the homes and the other engagements, for example, like sports teams that children may be a part of. All of that to finally lead us to our fourth pillar, which is our advanced training series. We're able to provide our law enforcement officers, our Department of Human Services agents, other community-based organizations with. Minimal fact forensic interviewing of children, building rapport with children. I see so many law enforcement agents out there who simply are scared of children. I don't like talking to adults, but I love talking to kids. But I think some of our cops out there are a little uncomfortable when they see just a little tiny face and don't know really how to engage them. So we really focus on those agencies to give them the power to really make a difference in these children's lives. We also have the role of this Child Advocacy Center model and the multidisciplinary team approach to child abuse investigations. So with these pillars, all of what we are doing is really encouraging and enhancing the knowledge that fundamentally already exists. This is nothing new. This is nothing surprising and it shouldn't be to anybody. But these are things that I feel like not a lot of our community members have the competence in knowing. There's a fear of reporting. There's a fear of the consequences of reporting. However, one single call can change the outcome of a child's life. And so with that, I will turn it back over to Jennifer if there's anything that I missed that she caught.
Very thorough, so I don't need to add much to it. I I just want to close with our loss during the pandemic is what happened to our children. They were stuck at home when it was deemed safer at home. And we know that it wasn't safe for these children. The eyes and ears weren't on them, and that's what our focus is, is to make sure that eyes and ears are on the children in our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that presentation. Is there any questions, Counselor Flores?
I'm not sure it really refers to what you've asked for, but I've just been dying to ask this question, and that is. Has the has the fact that school districts sixty and seventy are now in a four-day work week? And a lot of children, I believe, are home alone or with other adults. Is that exacerbated, you know? Child abuse in this community?
Where we don't have statistical data to back this comment or this answer, I say yes. And and that's where this prevention is, you know, right now, we have. Reached out to District Seventy, they're on board with our training. Health solutions, and we are in the process of getting that. That collaboration with District Sixty. So I feel yes, Jordan's expert opinion.
Thank you. What we're seeing, being boots on the ground here, is anytime that a child, specifically children under the age of twelve. Are lacking supervision, the risk for abuse to happen is exponential. We're talking about children who are likely to not be able to fend for themselves to make safe decisions. We know that research shows that human beings under the age of twenty six do not have fully developed brains. Thereby cannot make fully developed decisions and choices. We know as well that the age in which risky, high-risk behavior, including sexual behavior, drug abuse, alcohol exposure. Those kinds of things are starting younger and younger, and not having the supervision becomes a true problem. While Jennifer says we don't have the statistics necessarily to back that up, research shows that that is such a trend that we really could make an argument for. I'd like to add on to that as well is the role that online school has had. Again, I could probably, I think, for twenty twenty one and then for all of twenty twenty two, part of twenty one, excuse me. We could pull a report from the information that we have accrued to see just how many children we've seen who are on online school. Being victims coming in through our center. And I would say, I would argue that that would be a majority. Outside of the watchful eye of regular in-person learning environments.
Like the online, but also homeschool.
Did I hear this right? Did you were asking for thirty seven hundred dollars, three thousand seven hundred dollars? And what is that going to be used for?
Okay, excuse me, that is to offer, really to help. Get offered incentives to people to participate. To help with the mileage of our trainers that are going out in our community. Um you know, we are a small profit, a nonprofit. We operate. I don't want to say in a shoestring budget, but on a shoestring budget, and those funds would help enhance that. Not only to the staff, but to community members. And also printing of the materials that we would give out, the training materials. I think that is probably the biggest cost that we will have. Producing high-quality professional, and we could do it in-house on our own. We have enough. We all are great graphic designers in our own mind, but we do want it to be professional.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from council? Saying none, thank you so much for the work that you guys do.
Thank you. Thank you for your work.
The next presentation that we have is an ARPA presentation from the ARPA for the community, sorry, the Public Convention Center. So do we have, I see Mr. Ortiz? And then. Okay.
Well, good evening, Madam Chair, members of council, Mr. Mayor. I know you guys gone through a lot of these presentations tonight, so I'll try to make it quick and to the point, but I appreciate the opportunity. To allow us to go over our ARPA fund request. I have a presentation that I was hoping I could get up here and. We'll just get right to it. Great. So I just before we kind of got got into our requests, I wanted to go over really, you know, the effect COVID has had. On our business in specific at the Public Convention Center. If you look at this graph, you'll notice that obviously we were closed completely from March to June in twenty twenty. And then we operated under various restrictions through the rest of the year in twenty twenty. We were anticipating that we would operate at full capacity in twenty twenty one, and obviously that wasn't the case. And it had a major effect on our overall business. In twenty twenty and twenty twenty one, we we experienced over one point two million dollars worth of cancellations. In twenty twenty, that was, you know, extremely detrimental to our business. And then we had about five hundred thousand dollars worth of business that rebooked in twenty twenty one. So although it was a really tough time for us in twenty twenty, we were able to rebound a lot of that business in twenty twenty one. So it wasn't like, you know, during the time of the early parts of the pandemic, we weren't doing anything. We were really trying to. Reschedule this business, so we didn't just lose it completely. Our can, our business continued to face significant hardwinds through the end of twenty twenty one. However, as I mentioned earlier, we rebounded and hit our gross and net revenue budget for the fiscal year of twenty twenty one. In twenty twenty, I just wanted to kind of show everybody some of the things that we were able to do during the time that we were closed at the direction of. Urban renewal. We were able to support many nonprofits and other businesses throughout the community. During the time that we were closed, specifically the SRDA, they were doing some renovations to their facility and needed a place to. Continue to provide their Mills on Will service, and we were able to help them out with that at no cost. We also partnered with the Pueblo City and 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 the county in spearheading the supporting Pueblo initiative. And we warehoused all of the online orders during the height of the pandemic out of the Pueblo Convention Center. Again, that was done, you know, at at no cost and and really, you know, for the betterment of our community. On top of that, we also helped the Pueblo Fruit Project fulfill some of their their bags at our facility. On several different occasions, again, just really helping out our community and supporting those needs during the time that we were closed. So those are some of the things that we did during the time that we weren't able to operate at all. And then, you know, later part of July in twenty twenty, we were able to open and start operating at limited capacity throughout the rest of the year. To give you a few highlights, in twenty twenty one, we had over two hundred and thirty eight events during the year. This was thirty more than we had originally anticipated within our budget. And we actually had four hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of cancellations. So this was a huge win for us at the convention center. As we booked over seven hundred and seventy five thousand dollars worth of business in the year for the year. Which is a record year for us, bookings in the year for the year at the Pueblo Convention Center. We actually were able to achieve our highest gross revenues for the month of July, August, September compared to the previous five years. And we actually generated over eighteen hundred hotel room nights, which these are strong numbers, considering that. You know, business hadn't returned to a hundred percent yet. I think that this is important to note because really the Pueblo Convention Center, in my opinion, is a marketing engine for the community of Pueblo. We get a lot of events that come here throughout the region and lately throughout the nation that, you know, have. Large events within our building, and they have never been to our community before. So I like to look at the convention center as a marketing tool for, you know, community. And this is one of the first times that many will see our community, and it shows that we're bringing a lot of people from outside of town. To our venue by the eighteen hundred hotel room nights that we had reported over the last year. So what are we asking and why are we asking for, you know, COVID funds? Understanding the obstacles that we faced over, you know, the last two years. We've been forced to make severe cuts to our budget due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. Our revenues were down seventy five percent in twenty twenty and nearly thirty percent in twenty twenty one. The significant loss of revenue primarily due to state and local restrictions and market apprehension surrounding public gatherings. Has forced us to forego almost all non-essential upgrades to our building. So we were really in survival mode during the entire time. I mean, you know, I've heard many of the council members up here and others talk about how it's impacted, you know, small business. And other types of avenues throughout the course of our community. It's also really impacted, you know, entertainment and specifically conventions, meetings and and our local convention center. Which belongs to everybody here, right? I look at our convention center as a public building that we all own. And I think for us to really be a prime destination throughout the state of Colorado. We have to keep up with the trends, and one of those trends is hybrid events. And being able to do some of these hybrid events, we need to make some upgrades to our facility to be able to do that. And I think that based off of what we've been hearing from some of our clients. You know, there's a, there's a big need for this. And when we applied for this, there were some standards that we needed to kind of follow. And and those standards were. Why, why do we feel like these funds would benefit us and how would they help, you know, mitigate COVID? And hybrid events gives, you know, many an opportunity to determine whether they want to actually come to the event or not. And just like you guys do here today, I mean, people could, you know, pop in online or. You know, come in person. And so I brought Nick with me because Don and Jerry weren't able to make it tonight to give you guys just a quick. Understanding of, you know, what we're looking for in regards to hybrid events and what he's hearing from. Our customers and clients from a sales standpoint. That way you guys have a really good understanding of why we're making the requests that we're making. And then on the last page, you'll see the act, we've actually narrowed it down to exactly what we're looking for for the convention center. Good evening, council. Again, my name is Nick Palmiotti. I'm the Director of Sales at the Convention Center. So I spend a lot of my day talking to people throughout the state of Colorado and throughout the region. Working to convince them why they should have their meeting in Pueblo, and we're competing against Denver. We're competing against Colorado Springs, we're competing against the mountain towns and Vale and Breckenridge and so on and so forth. And what we're hearing is the expectation that hybrid events is going to be part of our industry for the foreseeable future. Hybrid events do a lot of things. They allow, they allow meeting planners to have a have an event rather than cancel it. You know, so there's an in-person portion as well as an online portion. For us, that's important for our business and because it, again, it allows us to at least have some of the group come to Pueblo. Rather than have to cancel the whole thing altogether. You know, it allows people, sick individuals to stay home, for instance, and still participate in the conference. So, you know, I'm hearing from from prospects and clients across the state that this is an expectation. Of meeting venues going forward and, you know, we're expected to. Meet the expectations of those that are also looking for meetings in Denver and Colorado Springs and so on and so forth. If you want to go to the next slide there. So we narrowed this down and and. I can get into as much detail on this as you as you'd like. We're asking for just over thirty six thousand dollars specifically for some audiovisual equipment. That will allow us to professionally conduct hybrid meetings and meet the expectations of. Meeting planners that have super high expectations, you know, when they're spending tens or thousands or hundreds of hundreds of thousands of dollars. On conducting these conferences, you know, there's a certain level of of professionalism that they expect. So these specific items are going to help us do that. And, you know, do a really quality product for the the folks that are choosing to come to Pueblo over anywhere else in the state. And and we want to make sure we can give them a really high-quality experience when they get here. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. Any questions or comments from council?
Almost each one of these things do just briefly.
Sure, yeah. So I'll talk about it in sort of two groups, if you will. Several of the items are specific to allowing us to put audio and video online. So the the first item on there is a multi-format AV mixer. That's a piece of equipment that allows us to put audio and video through the stream. The third item on there is a high-definition camera. Obviously, that's for for recording the video. The fourth item on there is several custom-built computers that are going to allow us to run the software that's needed for the simulcast. And then the last item there is some some microphone technology that allows us to do that as well. So those are, those items there are specific to the simulcast part of it. But again, the, an important part of this is also the in-person piece. So we've, we've requested several upgrades to our projectors, which would be the in-house portion of the presentation. As well as the seventy-inch video screens that are on here as well. So those two components are for the in-house. Part of the presentation. The other items are directly related to the audio-video product that goes online in the simulcast. And Counselor Flores, just just to make you aware, you know, a lot of the equipment that we currently have in-house is seven to eight years old. Which is, you know, almost to the end of life. And in a lot of cases, during the course of nineteen, eighteen. And even parts of twenty, we're replacing that as revenue is coming into our building, right? Unfortunately, you know, in March of twenty twenty, all revenue stopped. And, you know, we were really just trying to figure out how we were able to get through month to month without having to shut the doors. You know, on a permanent type basis. Kudos to Nick and his team for what they were able to accomplish in regards to in the year for the year. Bookings with closing over seven hundred and seventy five thousand dollars worth of business. If you guys look through the course of our history, that hadn't been done in the last seven to eight years. So that's huge, you know. And I think that this ask is minimal to what it's going to produce back in regards to revenue to our organization. And I think for, you know, the amount of people that we could potentially. And I think for, you know, the amount of people that we could potentially get here compared to, you know, the Breckenridges, the Vales, uh, the Denvers. Um, we're seeing a trend that people want to come to Pueblo. It's not too fast-paced and it's not too slow-paced. And one of the things that I hear all the time, being a lifelong Puebloan is, well, I didn't know Pueblo had this. Or I couldn't believe that there was a riverwalk down in Pueblo and it just, honestly, it blows my mind, right? And I think that this is just a component of getting those people down here and winning them over versus, you know, other, other organizations or other venues, you know, across the state of Colorado.
Yeah, and lastly, I, I don't have any questions, but I, I want people to know that. You know, not only is this, you know, the convention center important, uh, in this getting us up to date with the equipment. But most people don't understand that the convention center has this huge ripple effect. It's like throwing a stone in a lake because when we bring, you know, a three-hundred-person convention, what do they do? They spend money here. And so the benefit of getting more people here by being current with our equipment and, uh, and what we provide. Uh, is just so helpful to all of our retail stores and our restaurants. And so, uh, you know, I, I just believe that this is a really small investment that really has the potential of some big rewards. And so thank you for the presentation.
Uh, councillor Tendio.
So basically asking for this money because of lost revenue?
I think lost revenue helps subsidize our expense. And I think being able to purchase this, um, in a, a regular given year would be something that we would normally not ask for. Because we're making the money within, you know, our organization that we could just purchase it to hit our regular operating expense. In this particular case, we weren't able to do so. So not necessarily because of lost revenue, but because we hadn't been able to keep up with the trends of purchasing new equipment throughout the last two years. We're playing a little bit of catch-up, right? So this is just one component of many other things that we're having to upgrade within our facility currently. Twenty-five years old and the older side of the building. And so there are a lot of, you know, the guts part of the building that are needing fixed that don't necessarily, um. Directly affect the client or the customer that's running the building, but the HVAC, the bathrooms, um. Constant, uh, issues in the parking garage that we're seeing because of vandalism. Those types of things do not allow us to make upgrades like this because we're constantly fixing and making sure and maintaining those things. That we have already in place. So I think this would help us get back to status quo. And then from here, moving forward, we should be able to take on that burden ourselves, um, based off of the revenue that we have coming into the building.
Uh, councillor Graham.
Was this in the tourism and hospitality pillar?
I believe it was.
Yeah, I think this is like the first one we've seen out of the tourism and hospitality. So I think that's really important to remember because that was one of the huge things that was hit. So thank you for your presentation.
Mister Kagosek.
Is it possible for you to tweak your application and apply for funds to improve air quality and ventilation?
Absolutely. Um, if I'm not mistaken, I thought, and maybe I am, in the original submission, that was, was that not part of it? I, we, so we had originally applied for a larger sum. And then we were asked to narrow it down because it sounded like this is what was being looked at. Um, but I, absolutely, I mean, that, that's.
Yeah, I, yeah, I know there's, it's a give-and-take process.
Sure.
And obviously, we want to award ARPA money to the convention center. There are different ways to do that.
Sure.
Okay, one is the lost revenue component. Um, but on page forty-nine of the regs, they specifically allow it, uh, uh. Funds to be spent on improving air quality and ventilation. And that's, that's in direct response, I think, to, to, to the virus. Um, so I apologize if there's been a miscommunication here.
And there might not have been. I mean, we've applied for several. This would be one of the first that we would hopefully receive. Um, but I, I'd be more than happy to do that, um, because I think air quality is something that we get asked all the time.
Yeah.
We get asked, you know, what type of, um, filters are we utilizing? How often do we change those? And it just becomes kind of a comfort factor for those that are attending.
Well, the, the mayor and council set the direction in terms of how the ARPA money gets spent. And my job is to try and make it fit within the regs. So, um, if you could give that some thought, uh, that would be helpful.
Got it.
Any other questions or comments from council? Seeing none, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you guys for the time.
Um, the next ARPA presentation that we have is from Southern, Southeastern Colorado Area Health Education Center, Seca Heck. And, um, we have Ms. Gonzalez and Ms. Muniz Valdez for the podium. Whenever you're ready. Okay, thank you.
Good evening, council and, um, madam chair and doctor, um, excuse me, Mayor Greta Schardt, thank you. Um, I'm Doreen Gonzalez. I'm the executive director, Southeastern Colorado Area Health Education Center. People know us locally as Seca Heck and, um, we do have a presentation, I believe. And our program is the Pueblo Back on Track Program. Um, just a little bit about Southeastern Colorado Area Health Education Center. We've been here since nineteen seventy-eight, uh, but really through the federal program, program. Um, work across the United States, all the AHECs, and they were developed in nineteen seventy-two. We're nonprofit though, five oh one C three here in Pueblo, serving Pueblo area people. Uh, our mission is to improve quality healthcare in Southeastern Colorado by providing services to students, healthcare professionals, and the community. And we want to address the prob, the problem in Pueblo is that during the COVID nineteen healthcare disruption, there was a lot of protocols and fears. And that people did not go to the hospital or to the regular doctor for, uh, follow-ups or to check on their healthcare. So that including screenings and as well as healthcare education. So in, uh, it showed signs of more preventable chronic diseases at this time. The doctors are starting to see those. And we lost, uh, loss of fees, income for supplies and materials to provide that healthcare education. It, it impacted all of Pueblo County members' health. Uh, the advancement of diseases here in Pueblo County, loss of limbs, eyesight, and life. I'll go over some statistics that we have accumulated for Pueblo County is that diabetes-related deaths account for our seven percent of Pueblo County deaths. At twelve percent, Pueblo County has statistically significant higher percent of adults diagnosed with diabetes than the state of Colorado. Thirty-five percent of Pueblo County deaths are linked to heart disease. And as far acute detox or, uh, anxiety from a COVID nineteen during that time. Fifteen percent of adolescents and eight point five percent of adults in Colorado reported having a major depressive edit, episode in the past year. And across the country and in Pueblo, the epidemic of substance use and abuse has continued over the past two years and at times increased throughout the pandemic. Our pillar focus is nonprofits. And our pro, project is back on track with diabetes, chronic disease, pain, and substance use recovery. Our diabetes self-management, chronic disease self-management, and pain self-management programs are Stanford University evidence-based. They're six-week-long classes. We provide them in English and Spanish and sometimes at no cost. Uh, Eve Muniz Valdez will go over, uh, what the acute detox is and who our target vulnerable populations are.
Good evening, council and, uh, Mayor Greta Schardt, thank you for having us. So the two programs that we're really focused on are the diabetes self-management programs and the acute detox. Acute detox is also known as auricular acupuncture. Um, the auricular acupuncture was initially founded in and discovered in nineteen seventy-two by a neurosurgeon. Who realized that with electrical stimulation in one of, in the ear, there was an area where it was effective to be able to relieve, uh, tension and pain. Fast forward, um, in the Bronx, it was used for those that did not have access to healthcare for those that were able to, um. Manage with some basic healthcare. It provides people some basic access. For those in the health industry, we know that access is one of the biggest obstacles, just having access to health, health, uh, healthcare. So, um, approximately three years ago, maybe closer to four, we were able to establish. Our program so that we could provide this to essentially the opioid population. However, as we continue to utilize the acupuncture or auricular acupuncture, we have found that. Those with migraines, stress management, uh, wanting just general health maintenance, muscle aches and pains, chronic management, uh, pain management. People are coming to us and asking for this to be implemented as a basic intervention more and more. Another population that is really looking for it is caregivers. We know that caregivers, and I think earlier in one of the presentations, people were talking about. Um, mental health issues related to caregivers. That's a population that is coming to me more and more to receive this intervention. Presently, we are getting more and more requests for how do I receive the training so that I can take the intervention out to my population? And provide this intervention. So currently I'm working on getting established in the training program so that I will be able to train others to. Be able to provide that to some of the populations out in, uh, some of our, uh, areas that don't have all the resources that we do in city. The other program that we focus on a lot is the diabetes health management. We know that, um, Doreen mentioned that during COVID. The diabetics are at a super-high risk for, um, COVID. And we know, we all, we have all heard the stories about, uh, people that are at high risk and what's happening to them. Once they get into the hospital, they don't always leave the hospital. Um, our diabetes self-management pro, program, uh, was established out of the Stanford University Patient Education Program. It is, uh, evidence-based. It's a six-weeks program. It's two hours every week. And as we all know, our population, there, we are at about nineteen percent with people over sixty in our area compared to thirteen percent statewide. Most of the people coming to us are in that range. However, we are also seeing younger people just because of the food trends, uh, the lack of exercise. That was also, um, that escalated, the lack of exercise escalated during, uh, COVID. So we are seeing younger people as young as twenties, thirties, forties. Now that population is of course smaller, but we are seeing them come to us, um, because they've just been recently diagnosed with diabetes. The focus for us is prevention. We want to be able to prevent the complications that come from diabetes. Cardiovascular disease, loss of limb, vision, kidney disease. Diabetes is probably the leading cause for kidney disease, um, just in general. Probably forty percent of diabetics will suffer from kidney disease at some point or another. The loss of limbs, fifty percent of the loss of lower limbs related to diabetes can actually be prevented. Um, if you've ever worked with anybody that has a foot ulcer, you know that they're progressive and that's, it's often difficult to, to manage. So the focus for us in our programming is prevention. We educate, um, individuals over a period of six weeks and we remain there as a support program for them. Uh, so that they can call us because once they have received the education, people go home and, um. As you might realize, it's hard for any of us to change how we eat. That's one of the biggest issues that we have. How do we change how we eat? Because we grow up with certain foods. We have comfort foods. Um, and we don't want to give them up. I know I certainly don't want to give up some of my comfort foods. So we work with them and we build, we set weekly goals, we model, and we interpret the symptoms and how they go about understanding what diabetes is doing to their body. People tend to be able to make changes more easily if they understand why they're doing whatever it is that we're asking them to do. Um, I'll be sharing here in just a little bit, um. It, essentially an overview of the self-management. We want people to be able to be self-managed. When you go into a physician's office, you're going in for fifteen minutes, but when you go home, you live with diabetes twenty-four hours a day. So we want people to understand and be able to develop good habits. So the program is about developing good habits. It's about understanding what they're doing and why they're doing what they're doing. Uh, we talk about stress management because for those that understand diabetes, we know that blood sugars will raise during, uh, stress, times of stress. We know that COVID has, uh, really shown that. Uh, we teach them how to work with the healthcare systems. We, we teach them how to work with their healthcare professionals. Uh, we teach them on how to choose healthy food. Oftentimes, people in poverty don't cook at home. They will turn to fast food. We want them to be able to identify what healthy choices are and why it'll do some good for them. So, um, those are essentially the two programs that we are focused on.
And of course, uh, we're, uh, there's the various outcomes. I won't go through all of those, but self-sufficiency, health equity. Family connections, independent living, and then, um, and then Eve went into acute detox and that it's used for anxiety and, uh, mental stress. Um, we plan to reach five hundred people regarding the back, Pueblo Back on Track Program. Uh, sixty will participate, post and, uh, pre-surveys will be used. And that, uh, acute detox, those that take it will receive, uh, will have a stress relief upon completion. And there's our budget of sixty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine and, uh, what it covers. And some testimonials that are in your papers. And thank you and for the opportunity and any questions.
Thank you for that. Any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so. Thank you so much.
Yeah, we appreciate it. Then last but not least, the final ARPA presentation today is around History Connections of Pueblo. So let's call to the podium Mr. Ramirez, Ms. Campbell, and Mr. Hio.
Good evening and thank you for your time, Madam Chair, Council, Mr. Kergosik, and Mayor Grattisar. I am Laurel Campbell and some of you know me, but you, a lot of new people, and I'm really happy to see some new people on council and educate them on how much tourism and history affects the people that come through here. I'll just make a brief statistic remark, and that is that 85 million people drive up and down I-25 every year. And I couldn't tell you how many turn off into Pueblo for anything other than food or a place to sleep. So we are a collaboration, the History Connection of Pueblo is a collaboration of 12 museums. So we each, we're not, we don't pay dues, we don't market, we don't get the marketing that the larger attractions get in town. And so we are asking this for marketing money to help all 12 of us that work together on a volunteer basis to promote Pueblo and Pueblo's wonderful history. I say all the time that we have more history down here in Pueblo and going down to San Luis and Southeast and anyplace north in Colorado, and I would argue that with anybody. We're centrally located for a lot of, a lot of people to go and see things in our area. But we do, we don't pay any dues and so we don't have money in the bank. We just want to market ourselves so we can get more people in. We assist all of our members and the budget that we presented was kind of a soft budget. We will subcontract to local vendors and businesses, but right now, we've chosen Vista Works out of Buena Vista before their expertise in, in tourism and what they do. Brian works with many of the local counties and has done excellent work for them. We feel like he can reach out to a lot more people than some of the other people. But he, he does, I know that he has some terrific testimonials from Awarfenow and Fremont County and the Colorado Tourism Office, which is extremely important. So we're going to move ahead now. Aaron?
Sure. Thank you, Council, Mayor Grattisar. My name is Aaron Ramirez. I'm the manager of Special Collections and Museum Services for the Pueblo City County Library District. And it's Pueblo's history, culture, and people that make us stand out from the rest of Colorado and the nation. There is no place like Pueblo. The organizations that make up History Connections Pueblo preserve, interpret, and provide access to this history. History Connections Pueblo connects history to a wide audience, from primary, secondary, and college students to new residents and vacationers. History Connections Pueblo provides unique experiences to the public that educates and entertains. And in this slide, you can see the 12 agencies that are a part of History Connections Pueblo.
Sorry, Christina Trishill, thank you everybody for the opportunity to be here today. So as Laurel and indicated earlier, we're requesting $275,000 to be able to use for marketing specifically for these 12 organizations for what we call heritage tourism. You know, when you look at the ARPA guidelines, you know, they're really talking about the negative economic impact on the tourism industry and how we can help that recover. I know President Graham, you made a comment earlier through the Public Convention Center, that was the first grant proposal to come out of the tourism and hospitality industry. And we're hoping this one would be another funding proposal because when you look at the numbers of tourism here locally, you could really see how much that benefits the local community. On average annually, there's about $94 million that's brought into our community for spending through heritage tourism. And we're talking about heritage tourism as defined by the National Trust for Historic Preservation are those tourists that come to a local area that want to experience a cultural, local cultural experience somehow through visiting a local site or a local park to learn more about the local cultural and history. And so looking at the 12 organizations that Aaron talked about, we definitely fulfill that need and gap for Pueblo tourism here locally. And when you're looking at that, you can see that all of 72% of local visitors within Colorado are seeking such an experience. That's one thing that makes Colorado and Pueblo so unique in that we are rich in that cultural heritage. We have varying missions throughout the 12 organizations, but I think it's a great collective topic that you can go from industrial industry to ranching or even at the Pueblo City County Library to look at their exhibits and learn more about some of their programmings that they have there locally with it. When we're looking at the economic impact that it had on COVID for us, it really impacted the tourist industry. I know people talk about the local restaurants and nonprofits, and that's definitely true. A lot of the funding, rightfully so, was diverted to organizations with human service needs. A lot of those requests you heard here tonight. But unfortunately, those in the hospitality and tourism industry were kind of pushed to the back burner, like I said, rightfully so, because the majority of funds needed to be directed towards that COVID relief. And so as moving forward, this is a way for these 12 organizations to help recover individually and financially through promoting tourism and hopefully have more museum guests and visitors onsite, but also to help the local Pueblo economy to recover through tourism. Because a lot of visitors that come to our organization, they're always asking other things that I can do. What local restaurants can I visit? What local shops can I shop in? And so we're also promoting Pueblo through a different avenue through that heritage tourism that you see today. And one thing that I really love with this proposal is 12 different organizations coming together for the same purpose and mission. When you look at those 12 organizations, if they would have come individually through ARPA request through the city and the county, what would that funding amount look like? And we were cognitive of that. And that's why we wanted to be able to band together to hopefully use our common strengths and our mission to be able to help improve our organizations as well as the local Pueblo economy with it. You know, another statistic that I want to point out on this slide is that 50% of all overnight visitors, not the day visitors that come for a day trip and back, but 50% of all overnight visitors can be classified as heritage tourism, tourists. And so I think that really hits home, especially from what they said at the Pueblo Convention Center. When they're bringing in those mass conventions of 200, 300 people, what are they looking to do at in the evenings? And they're definitely one partnering agency along with the Pueblo Chamber of Commerce, Pueblo Latina or Pueblo Latino Chamber of Commerce, as well as the Pueblo West Chamber of Commerce that we're looking collaborating with, not just solely in our silo, but also looking at Visit Pueblo and how we could incorporate what's already being done collectively through the city and the county to help push forward our initiative. When you look at the Visit Pueblo site, the cultural and heritage tourism sector of that site is the third most clicked-on site for that website specifically. And then average people stay on there about a minute and 30 seconds. When you're looking at marketing, that's really huge. And that's one of our plans is to hopefully partner with them to help expand and develop that, to hopefully bring more local or to bring more tourists locally here in the community. And I didn't know if anybody had any questions or any comments or if Laurel or Aaron, I missed anything?
Thank you for that. Any questions from council, Councilor Atencio?
Great explanation, Christina. That was compelling because, yeah, a lot of organizations are, need to recover and the tourist industry, and especially all of the museums and all of the heritage places need to, need to recover. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a great team.
Yeah, you actually gave one of the best explanations as to why you need the money opposed to a couple of others.
Why do you think we chose her to speak?
Councilor Flores.
Yeah, I love the fact that you're consolidating together. I mean, there's power in numbers. But I was thinking, I like, you know, the marketing piece is important, but I have an idea for you. And I was just sitting here thinking about that, and that is, you, you have the convention center and you have so many artifacts between all of you, whether, whether it's that old fire engine or something out of the Steel Workers Museum. And, and maybe working out a deal with the convention center of having two or three art pieces during a week with your advertising stuff right there. And it will pique the interest of the visitors. And then you also have conventions where the wife has, the husband has nothing to do during the day. And that happens, you know, to all of us that go to conventions. So you have a built-in market right there. Go to them, you know, go to where they are at and show your paintings, show your, you know, the fire engine there or something from some other museum and work out a deal with the convention center. Plus, you enhance the convention center by bringing in artwork or sculptures. It's just an idea I was just thinking about as you were following the convention center. And I'm thinking it's, what a, what a great marriage there. A great idea.
Yeah, I, I think you're right, along the same lines of what we're thinking. And that's why we're looking to collaborate, not within just these 12 industries, but how we could promote tourism and how we can promote Pueblo as a whole. That's definitely a great opportunity. I know that they have space built into the walls over there and especially with expansion over there and seeing what we can do about getting like little rack cards there or even on one of their televisions have, you know, promotional videos play. So I really like that suggestion too as well.
We've also talked with the Chamber, Danielle is quite interested in when they do have conventions, helping put together tours to some of our museums for the women or men that are there with their spouse for the convention, whatever they're there for. We used to do farm tours, agritours, and we had several, several of them when the wives wanted to go out and see because something that we probably need to work on joining us are the Pueblo farms. They're sixth generation. They are huge. And so this is just all enveloping. We, we think that we might be one of the only organizations in the country, probably the state, that has come together like this with nothing but the whole, whole process of helping each other. When we have an event, we can volunteer, we can get volunteers that way. It's just a way of doing it and getting the word out. We advertise each other's events. And so just so you know, this is what we're doing and we've been together for a lot longer than ARPA. We've been together for, I don't know, we had Mayor Grattisar come and talk to us and that's been how long? Four years? Three? Not four? Okay. And yeah, three, but we were probably together four years before that. So we're not new. And probably a lot of the problem is that we were closed like everybody else and we are slowly getting people to come back. But I think this summer will be a great tourist time. And if we can get the marketing out, we were hoping it would start this spring, but we'll see.
What the pillars, I think, in the leadership team liked about this proposal, this is a proposal that came in and we sent it back to them saying, hey, we really like this idea, but you need to flesh it out a little bit, work on a little bit, get that collaboration aspect down. And they've come back to us now and that's why we're recommending that we move forward on this because this is the kind of thing that will help the tourism industry recover, especially these specialized museums and exhibits that were devastated during, during the pandemic. So we're, we're excited about this.
Mr. Kergosik.
I, I think this is a great idea and it's needed. The question is, does it qualify under ARPA? Page 161 of the regs, quote, "Treasury-identified declines in revenue as possible metrics to compare the economic impact on a particular industry relative to the tourism, travel, and hospitality industries." Treasury further provided that aid should be limited to businesses, attractions that were operating prior to the pandemic and affected by the required closures and other efforts to contain the pandemic. Is, is it possible for you to put together a proposal that says, we lost $275,000 of revenue because of COVID? Tourism was down. And then we make the grant and then you all spend it for marketing. You spend it, you hire your own marketer, you, you do your own proposals. But it's, it's more defensible for the city to say, hey, this, this has lost revenue to nonprofits and we're going to help them recover. We're giving the money to them and they are going to figure out how best to recover rather than us saying, operating prospectively to say, we're, we're going to do marketing. As, as Councilor Atencio said, ARPA looks backward. ARPA says, who's been impacted in particular? What populations, what groups have been disproportionately impacted? So yes, this is a great idea. I just, I'm trying to make it work under ARPA. So if you come to us and say, here are the 12 groups and here's our, here's our revenue for 2019, here's our revenue for 2020, 2021, it's down because of COVID. And, and is that possible to do that?
No, we definitely can do that, especially when you're looking at these 12 organizations. We could easily make up that 275,000. But one thing that I talked with Julia about when submitting in the 990s for this organ, for these organizations is that just looking at the 990s can be deceiving. That's why we submitted individual narratives to go along with each 990. Take an organization, one of the organizations that did really well and hustled to get COVID relief funds through every avenue that they possibly could, that they're in the black for maybe one year only because they have one-time funding assistance through COVID. But normally without that funds, they would have been in the red. That's just my only concern that would, would be a barrier or a block. We definitely could make that argument.
First of all, 990s is the beginning analysis. If, if you can show by count of, of visitors that it was this level in 19 and it's down, it was down in 2020 and it's down in 2021, that trend continues. If you can show the number of visitors is, is down and consequently, our revenue is down and we, the best way to recover is for us to collaborate. This is a great idea. And, and, and hire somebody, and I think you mentioned a group, so that you do that, the city doesn't enter into a contract for marketing, but we say, okay, here are the 12 groups, each of you gets this amount and God bless you, spend it what, how you want to recover.
And we can do that.
That's great. Thank you. Then you can pull from each organization.
Yep, exactly. Yep.
Well, I think it's a great idea and I think it shows collaboration instead of like competition. And I think that that's fantastic. So thank you so much for your time. That concludes our ARPA presentations. If there's nothing else for the good of the order, which means 8:20 and I'm adjourning this work session.